Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the budget for the city of Quincy for 2025, 2026. Jen, could you all roll?
Counselor Ash.
President.
Counselor King.
President.
Counselor Campbell.
President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor Harrison.
President.
Counselor Leeann.
President.
Counselor Mitten.
Chairman McCarthy.
President.
Nonetheless, at the time.
Thank you. The open meeting law language, I need to read this, please. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed to acknowledge them permissible. Thank you. This evening, we have at 6:30 the public hearing for the budget. I know we'll have a few people speaking. I'm going to keep it to four minutes per person in regards to some structure so we can move it along, but we can definitely hear everyone's concerns, both positive and negative. Please try to stay on point, try to stay with the city and with the budget, try to make sure everyone's respectful, no personal attacks at anybody. Again, just stay on the budget and on the city. And we'll begin right now. Before I start, I want to mention there are sign-in sheets in the back, and those sign-in sheets indicate in favor or against of the current budget that I'll be discussing. So if people don't want to get up and speak, they can sign it out in the back. It's right to the right in the conference room. Could we please stand and do the pledge releases before we begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could too also in regards to the public hearing, if we could form a line, it moves a lot quicker than waiting on everybody to get up and just form a line, it can come up, and we can go at it right now and please state your name and your address when you come up to the podium. Thank you very much.
Maggie McKee, 117 Rosson Road in Quincy. So I'm here to talk about an item in the budget that affects every other item, and it's the body that we're in right now, the city council. So the council makes recommendations, policy recommendations, and local laws, and one of the local laws it made last year was to raise counselors' salaries by 50%. So with the council budget set to spike in January, I wanted to find out what that money is supposed to pay for and whether taxpayers are getting their money's worth. I read through the city charter, the city code relating to the council, the city council rules, and council committee meeting agendas on the city website. Here's what I found. According to Council Rule 25, the council is supposed to hold a public hearing every month on the second Monday of the month. According to Council Rule 26, at any public hearing held by the council, each speaker can take 10 minutes to address the topic at hand for a total of up to three hours. If there's time left after everyone has weighed in on the hearing subject, Rule 26 says that people can address other issues. Both of these discoveries came as a shock to me because the council has repeatedly refused to hold public hearings over issues that residents, including myself, have asked them to. And when the council does hold a rare public hearing, people are often given just a few minutes to talk or have their mics cut off if the council deems the subject off-topic. I also discovered that most of the council's 19 committees don't meet. Only two of the 19 have met in the last year, and of the others, the next most recent meeting took place in 2020. Seven committees show no record on the city website of ever meeting. According to Chapter 19 of the city code, counselors' duties include identifying and discussing issues impacting the city of Quincy, receiving and considering public input, and making appropriate decisions in a manner which encourages full and open discussion. But this city council rarely debates issues among themselves, and that is clear in the votes they take. A listing of all the votes on issues before the council in 2024 shows that out of 157 votes, only one had any dissenting votes. That means that 99.4% of the time, all counselors voted as one. Even for contentious issues like the Granite Links Golf Club lease extension, where dozens of residents spoke out against the deal, arguing that it benefited developers over taxpayers, not a single counselor voted against the lease. When so many residents opposed the plan, it's hard to see how counselors fulfilled their duty under Chapter 19 of the city code to represent the residents of Quincy. As a taxpayer, these things deeply concern me, and I hope that the council will start following its own rules and set monthly hearings and truly debate the issues that come before it.
Excuse me, please. Try to enunciate. This is a lousy sound system. I barely understand a word that she said. Try to be as clear as possible. Maybe you can go through the sound system.
Yes, sir.
Because it's almost impossible to understand what Garbo's saying.
I am Heather Doni, and I live at 912 Southern Artery. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. It's what?
I think you put a couple of words.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Perhaps a few people on the city council are sick of hearing about this, but some of us are here to speak about the Quarry Hills Golf Course lease again in the context of current budgetary concerns. Maybe the city council is under the impression that this lease is a done deal because you voted for the home rule petition, saying the mayor could enter a lease of his choosing. But that petition goes before the State House soon, and there's still room for the mayor and his team to think more carefully about the choices that they are making. We're asking for you, city council, and fellow citizens following the process to help facilitate and encourage this rethink. We heard that there'll be a land appraisal done under considerable political pressure and believe that that is one step in the right direction. We need more good governance measures like that to be commonplace. We need political pressure encouraging city leadership to do the right thing all the time. Meanwhile, absent an adequate level of this, Quincy residents are becoming more concerned about how this city is spending money and what kinds of processes are being undertaken to over-leverage us all so badly. Whether we're underwater due to excessive raises or large religious statues for public buildings or land giveaways to favor developers, none of it is okay. The Quarry Hills Golf Course lease is just one example of the latter and shows how this city is often not exhibiting proper stewardship or fiscal responsibility over resources that rightfully belong to all of us, the residents and the taxpayers. When it comes to the new Quarry Hills lease, and it is a new lease rather than an extension, the city has repeatedly said, if they make money, we make money. But anyone paying attention can see we're pretty far in the red due to many questionable city financing decisions, and with economically lean times ahead, and that's probably where we are, we believe the city should have to work to prove the veracity of that kind of statement here and with each upcoming big business decision it makes. Meanwhile, there's a lot of other ways you could finish that sentence. Here's a few, and please see if you can come up with a few more. If they make money, we let the developers keep it because we disinherited our children with a forever lease. If they make money, we might make a little while they make a lot because we gave it away for a fraction of what it's worth. If they make money, we won't know that they did and may not get our share of that money because we don't have an oversight board or an audit. If they make money, we will turn a blind eye to the ongoing lease defaults in exchange for a check. If they make money, we will have a fancy golf course for rich people and canceled sports games due to flooded fields, inaccessible parking lots, and trashy half-finished trails for everyone else. If they make money, we might have to watch this land become a new kind of dump after getting subleased to foreign investors, private equity, or others who do not care about what happens in or to our city. If they make money, we may very well wonder why we ever trusted this promise of money without a proper guarantee. Part of balancing a city budget is getting the right ethical and civic-minded framework in place. We need the city council to insist on informed and responsible financial management and prevent a continuation of the pattern of sweetheart deals and insider moves like this Quarry Hills forever lease that are leaving the ordinary people who live in and love the city short-changed and left out. Please start by asking the mayor to choose better, strike stronger deals for us with developers like Quarry Hills and any other business leases and development projects coming down the pike. Please help patch the budget by first knowing the value our city holds and then making sure that developers and anyone else coming for a piece of this place knows that too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria Mulligan, 21 Winthrop Ave. Thank you for inviting me to this hearing tonight. I'm going to continue to talk about the forever lease. That's our affectionate term for it. And so on behalf of the Quincy, I'm sorry, Quarry Hills Citizen Advocates, which is a group that I chair, we continue to advocate for the city to follow fiscal responsible practices in executing the current and future leases for Granite Links Golf Course so that we can continue to benefit from this important source of revenue. To that end, I'd like to make two recommendations tonight. One regarding the budget and another one regarding some new information that we've just received from the Office of the Inspector General about golf courses. So the first one is about the budget. So as written, the FY 2026 budget report doesn't address revenues from the golf course. There's no line items in there, that I could find at least, that shows how much we made, you know, in past years or how much we're expecting to make. And that's important information to know because it's a source of income, you know, a large source of income. That should be transparent. So to improve transparency, we recommend those line items be added. We also encourage you to set the expectation that the administration will seek your approval when they want to spend those funds. And I say this because, remember in the first round when we were advocating, we found that some of the funds for the Oversight Fund that's supposed to be dictated by the lease was spent on things like Christmas lights, and it's not supposed to be spent on things like that. So, you know, please seek approval before they spend that money. The second thing I want to talk about is this report that we just received. It's called the Advisory on Municipal Golf Course Management Contracts. It's a thing of rare beauty, actually. It was put together by the Office of Inspector General, and in it, it has all kinds of really great advice on making good contracts between municipalities and operators of golf courses to protect the taxpayer. So I'll send this to you after the meeting. So I encourage you to carefully review all the due diligence recommendations in this And a couple of quotes from the report that I thought was pretty eye-opening. One of them is municipal officials have the responsibility to protect our public assets, the golf course. Ensure contracts are adhered to and ensure taxpayers get what they are paying for under the contract. Municipalities should not rely on vendor relationships or the belief that the legal and moral weight of the contract itself will ensure compliance. We've been saying this for two years. Trust and verify, and it says it right in this report, trust and verify. Without adequate reporting and controls, municipalities have no assurance that they are receiving fair and complete share of the revenue. So, you know, you didn't have this report when you voted on it last December. If you did, I really think you wouldn't have voted the way that you did to send this to the State House. But regardless, regardless of the determination of the home rule petition, which is at the State House right now, we continue to advocate strongly that the city council support a resolution to demand that the city perform due diligence in accordance with this report, audit the rent, which has never been done, negotiate a better deal that secures more revenue for the city of Quincy for us moving forward. We need the money.
Maria, we're over the four, so if you could wrap it up.
Yep. One more sentence. Now, you don't need permission to make a resolve for this. You could do this today, and you could also come with us to the State House when they have a public hearing on this, which is going to be within the next month. I invite you all. I'll save your seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can people hear me?
Yeah, a little closer.
A little closer?
Yeah.
How's this?
That's good.
Okay. My name's Gene Borusen. I live at 73 Edison Street. I'm in Ward Two with Counselor Ash. And thank you for the opportunity to ask a few questions. Being a homeowner in Quincy, I'm always interested in the tax rate for real estate.
Louder, please.
Louder?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try. Interested in the tax rate. So following in the ledger in the Sun, the mayor seems to indicate that we're right in the middle of the taxation. My shock was I found out that for cities over 100,000 people, we're number one. Every citizen owns $10,289. Number two is Cambridge. They only owe $3,600. So just curious about the message that the mayor's office is sending out to homeowners. Another one is, back in 2023, the S&amp;P said Quincy was on the hook for $1.1 billion in debt. Recently, the Quincy Patriot Ledger said, oh, no, we're up to $1.6 billion. Kind of curious, in two years, how did we manage to get $500 million more in debt? That obviously has to be paid for. We're talking about your 8.6%, I guess, over budget, higher than last year. Well, the last time we had an 8-point-something percent increase in budget, I wound up with $1,500 increase in real estate taxes because we had to raise the tax to pay for all the bills. Is that going to happen again? Are the homeowners going to get another $2,000, $3,000 real estate tax increase? Now, the destruction of Al Capulco Restaurant, paying real estate taxes, pet employees, people come into Quincy to go to the restaurant, paved over for a mini park. It's after $6 million. What do we get out of it? Someplace for people to sit down and throw McDonald wrappers, and then DPW gets to clean them up. No money back on that one. Did the owner of the Al Capulcos find another place in Quincy to set up his business and continue paying taxes? Probably not. Now, when IHOP was moved from their location to the new building, Quincy tried to work with them. We gave them $1.2 million to move their kitchen. This is a company that made over $3 billion in pure profit. Why are we giving them money to move their kitchen so they can continue making more money? Oh, by the way, on your website for Welcome to Quincy, the Hertz station that you have listed for car rentals doesn't rent to people. It only rents to Ubers. And your website needs a lot of help for having a tourist come to Quincy. And thank you very much for the chance to talk.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Kathy Thrun from 234 Everett Street in Wallaston. In April, the budget, the mayor announced in the Quincy Sun that we were going to have a lean budget. I'm sorry, but this is not a lean budget. Quincy's per capita spending is second only to Boston. That's not lean. It's robust at best. It's excessive at worst. We were given, the public, just one week to review 356 pages. The mayor offered a summary, but I only heard one question from this council. No other questions for the mayor? We've heard promises for years that more development would mean more revenue. The 2025 budget claimed $20.1 million in additional revenue over three years. The 2026 budget claims exactly the same amount. Maybe a cut-and-paste error, but there's a lot of pages in that exact summary that are virtually identical between '25 and '26. Even if we take the $20.1 million over three years, that's about $7 million a year. That's not going to go very far towards a $35 million difference this year. Every category of expense went up. One of the biggest places it went up, it was in salaries. Over half the budget is salaries. In 2023, the city council approved the Gallagher Report and increased salaries for department heads and for some of the officials. As I looked at the salaries today, most of the salaries, a good portion of them, are over $100,000. Do you know what the median salary in Quincy for your average citizen is? It's not $100,000. It's $95,000 for a median family. Very upsetting. And some staff actually earn over $100,000 in overtime. I think we need to manage our budgets a little bit better. And let's not forget that you voted for your own raises and for the mayor's raise. And let's look at the pension for a moment. I don't know how much we've drawn down on the pension bond yet. I know that it's a massive debt, but how much have we had to take out to cover pension? On pension, what have we done to manage the pension? Have we looked at reducing benefits? Have we looked at making contributions higher? This is called managing a budget. Now let's talk about debt. Debt, as Gene has indicated, our debt service exceeds even Boston's by 35%. Page 15 of the executive summary paints a picture of declining debt using ratios. If you go to the 2025 debt book, and believe me, it's not pleasant reading, it's a lot of numbers, well, then our debt payment does not go down until it's over $70 million right straight through 2038. That's 13 years of that much debt. And I don't know if the state's going to make up the difference, gentlemen, not this year. Short-term debt also jumped, so probably it went from eight to 12 million this year. You've got to stop with debt. I have stood in front of you, other members of the public have stood in front of you and have asked you to please stop doing any more debt. You're going to do more debt in 2026? I would suggest that it's not a good idea. Now, Standard &amp; Poor has taken notice, and their April 2025 report, they revised Quincy's outlook to negative, citing rising costs, limited flexibility, and ballooning debt. Rising debt, rising salaries, rising costs across the board. It's time to manage the budget. It's a little late to manage the budget, but it's time right now. I ask you, who's going to be able to afford to live in Quincy? I don't know if I'm going to. Maybe that's a good thing for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'll use the microphone or not, but my name's Mike Carter, 5 Post Island Road. My wife Cindy and I have been lifelong, are still lifelong residents. We're 75 years old. We've been taxpayers and homeowners since 1971. We just made the latest installment on over $10,000 of real estate taxes, and we are very happy to live in Quincy. We have wonderful services for a large part and great service from our public servants. However, I do want to make a few quick comments. Some have been made by previous speakers. During the mayor's budget proposal last week, I found it, I don't need Miracle Air, I found it to be extremely hard, you know, to hear what the proceedings were containing. I think this microphone, whatever the sound system problem is, needs to be rectified. Absolutely. Also, on a $455.8 million budget, we only heard praise from the counselors, basically. I know you have a hard job, and we need to talk about the good things, but there was only one substantive question about any line item at all or any question, really, about what if, what do we do about likely coming cuts from, you know, federal funding? And we have to have a plan for that. Next, the debt service has been mentioned before as a line item. $75 million in this proposed budget. What is the actual debt? What is the amount? The interest rate? What's the timeframe? Will there be unspecified and undisclosed spending in this budget as there has been with the statues at the public safety headquarters and the cemetery gates? Is there any plan to meet the debt service on this massive amount of money, maybe up to $1.6 billion with a B dollars? Also, on the line item, the elections budget proposal is for $1.2 million. The last election, we had about 20,000 registered voters turned out, out of about 55,000 or more. I think we need to do a lot to improve the voter turnout in our city. Some of that's up to us as citizens, some of it's up to the election officials and the council. They're doing a good job, but it needs to improve. I want to know if there's any response to the use of COVID relief funds that were spent for the gates under the money that was appropriated for the cemetery, $3.1 million. $800,000 was spent on the gates. Likewise with the statues, $850,000 that was not approved. Nobody knew about it ahead of time. It was the mayor's vision, and nobody else was involved as far as we can tell. COVID money was supposed to be to help individuals and businesses that were really affected by COVID, and I think there's a big story behind the misappropriation of those funds, including the purchase of the Monroe Building. I'm wrapping up here. With global warming, it's strange to me that we don't have, with all the other departments that we have, and being a seaside community, that we do not have an environmental department or an official commission to deal with environmental issues. And my last point, it's been brought up many times before, with taxes rising and more and more of a senior population, I'll include myself in that, we need to do something for tax relief for senior citizens who have built this city through the generations with their tax money. Thank you so much.
My name is Sue Darty. I live at 922 C Street. I've been owned a home there since 2009. And my concerns about the budget are, one is that the money that's being spent on public safety and police versus the schools, you know, in the last contract negotiation with the teachers, you know, there was a lot of disdain for the fact that they wanted a raise, right? So when I see that, again, I see that we're valuing, we're kind of valuing building a carceral state here in Quincy rather than an educational state where we want to invest, there's a higher amount of money going to public safety. And after the amount of money that has been spent on the, I call it the police palace, I drive by it every day, and the statues and all that, it just feels like, to see also in here that there are new positions being added for public safety. The police would add new patrol officers, a senior investigative liaison, and an evidence control specialist. When this is kind of debt, I wonder if we should be adding like three-figure positions? And also, this, I thought, the fire department, they were going to add 16 positions that are funded through a three-year federal grant. So what happens when that grant runs out? That's going to be money that the city has to pick up and the taxpayers have to pick up. So, yeah, we need public safety, but are we overspending on public safety? I feel like we may be doing that. Another position I wondered about was the senior fraud and scam liaison to the city's elder services department. They probably should have had that before the last director was working there. I don't see why we would be mean to add $90,000 position for that, you know. So there's other positions as well, but those were some things that I found problematic. If we're in that much debt, can we really afford to be hiring new people? And who's going to get those jobs? You know, is it going to be more patronage, friends and family of people in the city who already work for the city? When I went around knocking doors to work on different issues, lots of people told me they worked for the city and they didn't dare to be on record about anything that was critical of the city. There's an environment of real fear in Quincy. People have jobs. They want to keep their jobs. They're afraid to say anything. So I don't trust the budget because I don't feel the oversight has been there, and the debt, I agree with everybody, the debt, I agree with everybody, the debt is way too much. So those are the main topics. I'd love to see more money go into libraries and stop buying up eminent domain and pushing, pushing businesses out of the city. I have a Patty Barry shirt on. I have, I know that was an eminent domain, but, you know, there's other businesses that have been pushed out by eminent domain. I do all my shopping out of Quincy, there's not many places you can shop here, and more and more of those places are getting shut down. So, and we might get a Trader Joe's, but, you know, what about good health? What about all the other businesses that were long-term businesses here that have been pushed out for Parker Parks, Bridges to Nowhere, and Cop Cathedrals? Thank you.
Just for a second, I'm going to recess out of the public hearings. Stay right there. Just open up the budget departmental hearings and then just come right back. So if I could, I'd like to open up the Budget Finance Committee meeting now at seven o'clock. Jen, can you take the role one more time?
Counselor Ash.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Campbell.
President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor Debona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
Counselor Leanne.
President.
Counselor Mitten.
President.
Jim and McCarthy.
President.
Nine members.
Thank you. With that, I am going to recess out of the budget departmental hearings and come right back. You're ready to go, sir. Thank you.
I'll, I'll keep this brief. I've never been here before, but I, my name is Greg Strusell. I live at ninety-three Bayside Road. And I'm concerned, I've seen the trends over the years in higher taxes. The spending is out of control, especially with the statues that I've been reading a lot about. And I just want to say that the quote in the Quincy Sun the other day was, the mayor called this a hefty budget increase. His word hefty, I think I need, I would like some support here in the council to use the word unacceptable for an eight point six percent increase in spending. A CEO at a major corporation would get thrown out of the room for that kind of increase. I hope that, as a concerned citizen, that you're watching out for our taxpayer dollars because it's continuously gone up. And like the gentleman who said, he did a lot of research, we know where you're going to hit us with that kind of increase. Please don't. Thank you.
I'm Bill Zamsal, forty-six Tilden Circle. Counselors, in all of my years of reviewing city budgets, this year's proposed budget sets a new high for problems. Louder? I'm sorry. Does that help? Okay.
I'm trying, Dave, but I'm, I'm soft spoken, Dave.
Be careful what you ask for. Anyway, it sets a new high for problems. For starters, on page fifteen of the budget book, the administration asserts that Quincy has a double A rating with a stable outlook and which is the second highest rating as well as the same rating as the federal debt. Reality, last month, Standard &amp; Poor slapped the city of Quincy with a negative outlook. A double A rating is the third highest rating, and the U.S. debt rating is double A plus. In short, oh for three. And that's just early in the budget book. Further reality, a rating cut is likely, given that just short of twenty percent of the proposed budget is going to debt service with even more like, more of the same likely in following years. The imposition of considerable local tax increases is coming, trust me on that. Next up, the proposed budget does not include anything to cover rank and file city employee raises as their current contracts expire in coming weeks, but no new agreements are in place. I will defer from making comment much about the forty-five percent raises that you all have in the proposed budget, but I must note that assuming first-year raises per inevitable new contracts at the same rate as the last year of the expiring contacts, contracts, FYI employee compensation would go up by around nine million dollars and thus see FY twenty twenty-six spending go up by roughly eleven percent from FY twenty-five and so set a new spending record increase. Instead, however, the mayor is looking to delay raises for city employees as well as whack taxpayers later to cover the eventual raises. Such is not responsible financial planning. Further problematic, the budget does not, does not, does not again show an annual five million dollar payment towards the thirty million dollar debt service restricted reserve fund balance mandated per the four hundred and seventy-five million dollar pension obligation bond indenture. As this reserve is contractually mandated, how is it being funded as it is not noted in the budget? Admittedly, I have theories, but such should be duly addressed by the administration, especially as the fundings of funding would be highly problematic per my theories to perhaps even illegal. Speaking of pension funding, last February, the pension employee, the Public Employees' Retirement Administration Commission directed the city of Quincy to put thirteen million more in the city employee pension fund as its investment portfolio has underperformed. Specifically, it lost one hundred million dollars in value in its first year several years ago and is thus underfunded at this point. Nowhere, however, is the fifteen million dollar payment noted in the FYI twenty-six budget or otherwise disclosed. Again, I have some theories as to how this nut will be covered. However, it is up to you all to find out exactly how during the upcoming budget meetings, hearings. Be sure to further note that similar PERC assessments are likely going to happen in going forward in future years unless the return on investment on the portfolio most unexpectedly enjoys extraordinarily outsized returns on investment in coming years. Net-net, taxpayers will likely not be seeing the hundred and sixty-eight million dollars in savings long touted by the mayor by going with a P O B to make the city employee pension fund actuarially whole. In fact, theoretical savings have already been cut by close to a third with more cuts likely to follow and perhaps even eventually crossing over into the red. It's the highly leveraged plan to borrow money to invest is hitting the fan. Something which, by the way, I reminded most among you over three years ago could happen by going with the innately risky and thus widely not recommended plan to go with a P O B when it was under consideration in this chamber. In the meanwhile, how roughly thirty million dollars in what are appropriate charges to FY twenty-six spending are going to be funded is currently unknown, as well as that the thirty million dollars is on top of thirty-six million dollars spending increase per the proposed budget. In short, so much for a lean budget as once was said by the mayor. In any event, it's now up to you, you all, to address how these problems that I have posed will, or face the consequences. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Counselor McCarthy, can you hear me? You can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
My name's Bob Haley. I live at seventy-five Elmore Park. I'm here tonight to pose several serious questions on the retirement and the pension line items in the fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget. A bit of background, shortly after the first of the new year, the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, better known as PERC, sends out a letter to each municipality advising them of their respective pension assessment for the upcoming fiscal year. The assessment is for so-called normal costs for the upcoming year, which entails such things as changes to active employee numbers, various other changes in any prior year investment losses as determined by the most recent formal actuarial evaluation of the pension system. Quincy was sent such a letter by PERC on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, calling for a sixteen million dollar assessment appropriation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. The amount is based on the funding schedule adopted by the Quincy Retirement Board. The most recent actuarial evaluation report submitted to the Quincy Retirement Board on October eighth, two thousand twenty-four by Stone Consulting for the period ending January first, two thousand twenty-four. While the report states in part, the city was fully funded in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two as a result of bond proceeds. Investment losses and other changes in the last two years have caused liabilities to exceed assets. Accordingly, the city of Quincy's appropriation for fiscal year twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six will be sixteen million dollars and is set to resume a five point four percent annual increase, which was in effect before the city issued pension obligation bonds in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. However, the city's budget line item for this year shows no such appropriation, zero dollars. My first question to you is what outside funding source is being used to fund this appropriation because it has to get paid? Next, what funding source did the administration rely on in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five when the same budget line item expenditure was reduced by four point two million dollars by Mayor Koch when he submitted Article two thousand twenty-four, one forty-nine to the city council in December of two thousand twenty-four? Further, does the city of Quincy have a funding source outside of the regular budget process that can continue to fund this line item going forward for as many years as might likely be necessary? In turn, if the city faces likely further significant PERC pension funding assessments in the future years, but the unknown to me funding source that has been tapped runs dry, future assessments will likely result in potentially significant budget shortfalls going forward. A further related concern of mine is the city of Quincy, as you know, issued four hundred and seventy-five million of pension obligation bonds in December of two thousand twenty-one. Roughly a year later, on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, PERC sent a letter to the Quincy Retirement Board changing the city's funding schedule to require only four hundred and forty-five million dollars to be provided to the pension fund. The Quincy Retirement Board audited dated twelve thirty-one twenty-three states in part, the city of Quincy contributed an additional four hundred and forty-five million dollars of proceeds from the pension obligation bond to the retirement board in December of two thousand twenty-two. At that point, what happened to the excess thirty million dollars in bond proceeds from the four hundred and seventy-five million dollars? Is the city using any of these funds to pay off the sixteen million dollar appropriation which is due and payable to the retirement board this year? Has any part been used of that to pay for previous PERC assessments or any other uses? Needless to say, my concerns are both considerable as well as valid. Local taxpayers have every right to know what has happened to millions of dollars, how they're being used, and what funding sources the city is using to fund the normal pension costs due every year. Simply put, you all need to press the administration for a comprehensive explanation in regards to the tens of million dollars. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Hi, I'm Joe Murphy, eighteen Macy Street. Can people hear me? Okay. So I want to ask you guys a favor. I want to ask you to make this the year that we turn this around because one of you might be our mayor someday, and the mess that's being left is going to be incredibly hard to clean up. And what I'm concerned about is the next person in charge is going to be cutting services, raising taxes beyond what the people in Quincy can pay, and basically turning this, from this city that we've, that you've built into something that we don't recognize because we wound up in so much debt. And it's happened in other cities, and it can happen here. I want you to take a look at what happened last week when the mayor gave his presentation and when I wrote to Eric Mason about it. They sound like they're very happy with things are going. And I have to ask you, are you, do you think things are going in the right direction? Because if you are, then, then you've been lulled further than I think that you should have been. Because right now, what we need you to do is every department head that gets up here, we need you to ask them, what can you do to trim this budget? What can you do to cut down on overtime? There is so much overtime being spent in this city. Our personnel costs are going up well beyond inflation. We are just raising salaries. We are not, and I'm not just talking about the famous ones, I'm talking about all over the place. Their salaries are going up above inflation. And when you ask why, I keep being told it's because an arborist left. Now, I understand, that's an important position. I want us to have a good arborist. But there are other people to hire at market rate. We don't need to start overpaying everybody. We don't need to start paying crazy overtime to keep people here. And so I want you to, as these talks go on, ask every one of them, what can we do? Not what did you do, because they're going to say this is my budget. What can we do to make this a little bit less? Because we're going eight point six percent higher than last year. We, last year, I believe there was a seventeen million dollar shortfall in just average spending. It might have been thirty-four million. It's hard to read the numbers, but we're on, we're on schedule to do it again. And then what is going to keep happening, because our debt service, even though it's leveling out, is not going to go down, and that's the best case scenario. So this is why we voted for you. We need you to do this. We need you to come to these meetings ready with your pencil and your red pen and help us out here. All right? That's all. Thanks.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Debbie Riley, and I live at nine Langgrain Street. A lot of the topics and things that I had concerns about have already been addressed, so I won't repeat anybody. But I will say that, you know, on behalf of every property taxpayer, we really do need to think about spending other people's money more mindfully. And there's so many great things that happen in this city. I don't think anyone disputes that. There are so many things that we love about this city, but we have to ask ourselves, what is it costing each and every taxpayer? Because those are the people that are struggling. They're worrying. People are selling their homes because they struggle to pay their property taxes. And so I would ask that when you make these decisions, when we look at all these programs, that we think about those people who are struggling and are not necessarily taking advantage of it. So the only item on the budget that I did want to point out, need the glasses, as I am now technically considered a senior, is with the budget category five forty-one, the Council on Aging, line item number five one zero zero two nine, the additional creation of a position for senior fraud and scam liaison at ninety thousand dollars a year. This brand-new position, which I can't imagine has a job description that's readily available, how will this person be evaluated in their effectiveness for this job in reducing senior fraud and scams? Why is this only available to seniors? Is this not a service that maybe every constituent could benefit from? And what exactly are they going to do? Are they going to just hold, you know, monthly, you know, events to, to help people, you know, recognize these scams? They've become more and more sophisticated. I think what we need to do is, we really should look at these types of line items and we should start to post jobs. Post jobs with job descriptions, post them so that people know what they can expect from this person. And I think that we need to, I had one more thing I wanted to say. I couldn't understand why this position wasn't maybe either under or in coordination with the police department. It would seem like most of this, this type of fraud really comes down to a crime. And, and why isn't it coordinated with the technology budget? It seems a bit odd that the, that the position would be under senior services. So I would ask that you consider maybe, maybe striking this one item from the budget and show the taxpayers that you're willing to take some stand on something. Thank you.
How you doing? My name's David Franco. I live on Euclid Ave, thirty-plus years. I am an employee for the city. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm like, I'm hearing all this pension talk. The way the pension works for me is every week, a cut out of my paycheck gets sent to the pension board. I don't, as far as I know, what I pay is what I get back. I don't know why the city keeps running short, like when we lost the three million dollars a couple of years ago to the email scam. It's, it's bizarro, man. I have an Acorns account that I started two years ago that's got more interest in it than anything, the pensions that I've had, that I've invested for five years so far, has accrued. I think the interest rate, I just got a statement, it was like point zero zero two percent. Like, what a joke. I, so, it's, I find it amazing that we're like sixteen million dollars out when I'm paying every week out of my own paycheck. Again, I don't know how it works for everybody else here at the city council. here at the City Council, maybe they match you or whatever, but my money, out of my pocket, my sweat, goes into that pension fund. And it kills me that we can't seem to get this right. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Could you hear me? Yeah, okay. Okay. I'm Ziqiang Yuan. Many of, many of you know me as Susan when I was connecting signatures and organizing protests against the pay raise issue. So I'm living at 8 Harvysland, Unit 2. And I see the 2026 budget, the city is going to hire more police officers. And my question is, do we need more police officers? Don't get me wrong, police officers are highly respected. Their work is essential to keep, to keeping our community safe. And they often put their own lives at risk. They absolutely deserve fair and competitive pay. That said, since their time is so valuable, we should consider whether every task they are assigned truly requires a police officer. For example, at many road construction sites, we often see officers standing by, not just one, quite often two officers. But in many cases, trained construction workers wearing reflective gear could safely direct traffic. Oh, oh, sorry. Should I repeat that sentence? Okay. So for example, at many road construction sites, we often see officers standing by, not only one, quite often two, but in many cases, trained construction workers wearing reflective gear could safely direct traffic. On quieter local roads, this should be enough. For busy highway, yes, assigning an officer may be necessary. But we should be thoughtful about how we use police time and resources. This is just one example. If civilians can handle certain tasks that don't require a sworn officer, we may be able to reduce overtime costs and reassign police to more critical responsibilities, like preventing and solving crimes. This is simply my honest opinion. We should be able to talk openly about how public money is spent, including on police, without being unfairly labeled as anti-police. That kind of name-calling and silencing is something I have seen firsthand in an autocratic country. I lived it, and I hope America can do better.
Address, your address, we didn't, we might have missed that. Sorry, Ellie.
I live at, I live at 8 Harvysland, Unit 2, Quincy. My address, right?
Your address.
Yeah, 8 Harvysland.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Alley Shaughnessy, 16 Bay Street. Everybody hear me? I probably don't need this. Okay. So, listening to people talk about the taxes and the fact that they're so high, it just, it, I, I think about the city of Quincy, and then I think about Milton that's right next door to us. Now, the average tax rate in Milton is $14,000 a year, roughly. The average tax rate in the city of Quincy is $7,000 a year. In Quincy, you can leave, you could leave a dead elephant out on the end of the street, and they're going to pick it up on rubbish day, and you don't have to put a sticker on it, you don't have to pay extra for it. They're going to pick it up. 2:00 in the morning, if you have a sewage backup in your house, I've experienced this, if you've had a sewage backup in your house, you don't have to call Road or Ruder. You pick up the phone and you dial the DPW, and there's someone there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And they're going to send out a crew, and they're going to figure out why you have a sewage backup in your house. They're going to Road or Ruder it or whatever they have to do, even if they have to dig up the street, they're going to stay there until they fix it. And where do you get the bill? You don't get a bill. In the city of Quincy, when you want to send your kids to a good school, we have good schools. Are they the best schools in Massachusetts? Not according to, you know, if you look at Boston Magazine and stuff, but they're really good schools. And we're right on the ocean, and it's clean. We do the best we can to rebuild our seawalls to protect the properties that we have to pay taxes on. And I get tired of everybody beating up the city. Because frankly, I think this is a great city, and we have to pay taxes. Yeah, but that's the way it is. And we have a lot of debt. We have a lot of debt because this is a business. And businesses that grow need debt to grow. Now, you can control your debt, admittedly. Should we spend money on, on excessive statutes? I don't know. But I know this, I love the idea of having a police station and a public safety building that is really the model for the state, as opposed to a police station that was falling apart for 25 years. The place leaked every single day. So I'm not coming up here to beat you up. All I'm going to say is, when you guys take a look at, and I want to look at this stuff as well, I just happened to see a little piece of the budget tonight. I don't have a lot of time to look at that, I'm trying to run a business myself. But I want to congratulate all of you. I think you do a great job. That's what I think here in the city of Quincy. Thank you. I know, you can boo me, go ahead.
Okay. I, I never planned on coming to speak, ever. Okay? I'm not a public speaker, I do not like microphones. Okay? Yes, my name is Merrill Smith. I live at 154 Granger Street in Quincy. Okay, you're welcome. Okay. But what I just heard was a bunch of nonsense, okay? Let's start, let's start breaking that down. One, Milton's tax rate is higher than Quincy's tax rate. Milton has no industry. We have tons of industry. We ought to have a lower tax rate because the industry ought to supplement what we need in this city, okay? That is a ridiculous comparison, okay? You've got a city with nothing and a city with a ton of industry and construction. Every time you turn around, there's construction. Every single street in this city, at one point or another this past year, has been under construction, okay? The mayor is continuing to make contracts and, and do what we have to do to improve the city, but at whose cost? At whose cost, okay? I'm not seeing any benefit of half those things, but I'm going to just tell you, I said, as far as raises and pensions and all this other stuff, okay? I think the pensions and the raises ought to be equal across the entire city, okay? What the police get for a raise, the teachers should get for a raise, and the mayor should get for a raise, and the city councilor should get for a raise. We should all be getting the same percentage every year and not inflate any job as being more superior than others because we're all working for the same cause, and that is us. That's it.
I think that's it. And we welcome all the thoughts, and, and we know how involved your folks are. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:30, and I will open up the department budget meetings. I'll give it a minute or two, and then we'll open that up. Good evening. I'd like to reopen the budget departmental meetings. And Mr. Mason, I think you are leading off with an overview on revenues. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. Let me, pointer. Yes, just as you said, Chairman, we'll start off with, like we do every year, with an over, with a retro look at the FY 2025 revenue, and we're going to look forward to some of the things that are going to impact FY '26 revenue. So to start off, when this report was prepared a few, a few business days ago, the city had collected 83.6% of expected revenue through 83.6% of the year. That's the first time I think I've ever seen that. So we are right on track. Additionally, the levy collection's at 85.2%. With personal property, we've collected 98% of it, and real estate, overall real estate tax is at 84.52%. So again, very much in line with where we'd expect to be at this point in the year. State aid has, we've collected 75.9%. Now, it's important to remember, most of state aid is quarterly or monthly, so we were at 75% of the way through the year at this point. So we actually have, we're slightly above where we'd expect state aid to be, and we have a very slight, we're slightly above where we expect local receipts to be, at 85.47%. You know, overall, I would describe this year's collection rate as, as stable and expected. I think, you know, if we go back over the last five years, what we've seen from collections is that we've seen an ebb and flow that's mostly been part of the post-pandemic recovery. It feels like we've stabilized past that, and a lot of our modeling and a lot of our internal forecasting shows that we've entered a stabilizing period. Now, looking forward to FY '26, we still expect real estate collections are stable and consistent. A lot of that has been some of the great work that the Treasury Collectors Office has done, helping address some tax titles and, and tax liens. Whenever we address those, we'll see a decrease in local receipts related to penalties and interest, but we will see more stable collection, and more stable collection is easier to forecast and a lot softer on budgeting practices, so it is a preferred methodology. The major local receipts that, that we've looked at, which is motor vehicle excise tax and mail's tax, they make up, they make up about 40% of all local receipts in those two categories. We do expect year-over-year growth, somewhere in about the 3.3% range, which is in line with most of our budgetary projections, and is actually in line with the state's budgetary projection for those categories, too. It's always nice when your forecasts line up to some of the state forecasts. Pushing forward in FY 2026, it's something I've said for the last five years that I've been up here, there's always inflationary concerns, especially in the post-pandemic world. You know, we're still seeing what I would call localized and itemized inflation, you know, inflation among one supply chain or among one pressure point that then has a spillover effect. Because we have a very holistic view on our revenue collections, that will always be part of the iteration of the modeling. So this may put downward pressure on consumption, which could affect local receipts, and we'll get in a little later of what some of those ups and downs of that may look like. I got to say, the state, the state has been very open with its consensus, so, I'm not sure, you know, I know the councilors know this, but for the people at home, usually in December and January, the state gets together and they have what's called a consensus revenue meeting, and they sit down with every, virtually every analyst and every analytical department in the state, and they basically do a roadshow of what they think revenues are going to be for the next year. And they do that prior to trying to, prior to engaging in the budget process. And the state has just been very forthcoming, very helpful to municipalities as we try and build our budgets. And what we've seen is that, while the state still has state revenue projected to, to increase, and they do have healthy, some healthy revenue lines, I would say, they have been very open in communicating to the cities what to expect in the event of state aid, in the event of federal aid affecting state aid. So carrying on that, that note about state aid, so we're expecting a 3.37% increase in state aid year-over-year. The net of state aid is going to be 68.7 million. I do want to note, all these numbers are as of the Senate committee hearings. It's, so it still has one more vote in the Senate before it goes to the governor's desk. But these numbers tend to be fairly accurate, so overall, we're expecting about a $2.2 million increase. To break apart some of these portions, you have state receipts. State receipts are primarily made up of unrestricted local aid, and then the biggest category, which is education spending, is Chapter 70, as it's known. And then you have assessments. The primary assessments are county assessments and MBTA and public transportation assessments. And you subtract those from the receipts, and you get the net effect, and that's what goes to support our budget. The state, as I mentioned, their most, they, they view their most pressing revenue issue as federal funding changes. And as we all know, uncertainty breeds reservation, which can flow over into state aid. But it's important to remember that this state aid is locked in once the governor signs it into law. And if we look at this trend, if we look at, if we say, hey, let's take a look at state aid and say, what are we expecting relative to what the state's saying? The state right now is projecting a 2.25% increase in non-Certax revenue. And what's very interesting is that non-Certax revenue makes up the vast majority of the budget. The Certax revenue is actually portion, they've capped it. Despite being about $2.4 billion in its estimate and performing at about $2.3 billion the year before, they are capping it at $1.95 billion. So if that increases, which it's expected to, by about $500 million year-over-year, the state has built in about a half a billion dollar buffer. Now, right now, the Commonwealth is reporting that they're going to fall somewhere between $244 million and $806 million below benchmarks. I want to be clear, that's not a revenue, that's not a deficit. That's actually below their revenue benchmarks, and they're not, and they don't count an additional several hundred million dollars in cert, in a surcharge tax collection, combined with a $375 million budgetary reconciliation. So the state budget's actually in very good shape. And if the state budget's in good shape, it usually flows down to state aid. Probably the, the most fungible tax, tax revenue we collect, the most dynamic, is local receipts. Local receipts are primarily made of things like penalty lien interest, all the way down to cemetery, miscellaneous cemetery revenue, to mail's tax, motor vehicle excise tax, vehicle excise tax, if you have a boat, dog licenses are part of this category. It's every, it's virtually everything. Local receipts are primarily driven by two major factors, inflation and consumption. And what we can, if we look at the history of inflation and consumption over the last five years, what we can see is that we entered this, these charts are from the Federal Reserve Economic Database, they go back to 1990. We can see that we were in a very outlier scenario over the last, you know, last five years. But we've, we have returned to relatively stable inflation, not expected inflation. The Federal Reserve is still a little tempered on that. But in terms of PCE, which is one of the major index the Federal Reserve looks at relative to tax collections, personal consumption expenditure, we have entered a fairly stable period. Can we dive a little deeper in this? We're going to, our local receipts are positioned based on this macroeconomic data, based on previous trend analysis, to be consistent and stable and experience stable growth over the next, over the next year. It's not, we're not going to see what we saw post-COVID, where we saw those massive spikes and those massive declines in local receipts, that were just a factor of pent-up. spikes and those massive declines in local receipts that were just a factor of pent up spending and pent up demand. We've entered actually a trend that's very similar to twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, which is a much stabler, about two to three, a little more than three percent in some revenue cases. But like I said, this really breaks down to what are market consensus? What are the, the experts and the analysts telling us? Well, right now, we're, there's a likelihood that the Fed is going to defer. It's at nine, I checked just before it came up here. It was, the CME had it at ninety-two percent likelihood of keeping rates flat in the June meeting with a very like, as a strong likelihood that we're going to see rate cuts within fiscal year twenty-six. And when that happens, you do see consumption based revenues get stimulated and you do see, like, you do see construction, anything involves, involves borrowing money get stimulated. So a lot of the effects of these, of this federal action is actually going to occur in FY 26. I think that's important to remember. As we discuss the next point, which is, the Federal Reserve has been very open in taking that wait and see approach. So a lot of the stuff that we used to indicate where local receipts are going to flow, where our local receipts are going to follow, we're being told by, we're basically being told to wait and see, wait and see. So that's why we are taking such a conservative estimate on our local receipts. And it is, you know, the, if you read, the beige book came out on the seventh. And if you're like me and you had, and you enjoy reading the beige book the Federal Reserve puts out, you know, it's funny, they'll tell you they're going to wait and see, but they'll say their long-term inflation target's two percent and that's three point two percent inflation. So that obvious means they're going to be more hesitant for rate cuts. But the market is still, and the market's usually the smartest guy in the room. Deloitte expects consumption to actually increase. And this was adjusted post the tariff announcements to be about two point nine percent increase, which again is right in line with what we expect for our local receipts. And finally, one of the challenges that Deloitte highlights and many other interesting leading analysts height, cite is that, you know, we're still looking at a six point two percent federal deficit to close out federal fiscal year twenty twenty five. We can have some crowding out effects and some of that crowding out effect can put pressure on interest rates. And if you put pressure on interest rates, that can tamper consumption a little bit. But again, Deloitte still thinks that even though they lowered their expectation, they still put it down to two point nine percent. So in summary, you know, FY twenty-five revenues are literally exactly on pace, eighty-three point six percent revenue collected through eighty-three point six percent of the year. State aid has returned to its pre twenty twenty growth, looking at about two point two million year over year increase. Local receipts remain constant and consistent with macroeconomic data and our local analysis. And yep, we're going to keep updating those models as we get more economic data in, especially after the June eighteenth Fed meeting. I think that's probably one of the most important Fed meetings in the last, or in the last three years. But overall, the revenue collections and projections remain stable. And I'm happy to take any questions from the body if they so choose.
So thank, thanks, Mr. Mason. Thanks for all the hard work, all the time.
Thank you.
Questions for my colleagues, Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to start off, I know you have other budgets in here, Eric Mason, and I don't want to get ahead myself. So I just wanted to did an overall just assessment, just a couple of comments and maybe I'll talk a little bit about revenues. And then I'll hold off until you finish all the other budgetary items that you have in front of us tonight. I think this, this is a time, you know, it's my tenth year up here since two thousand sixteen. Going to miss Counselor Liang and Counselor Kane next to me. When we first started, there was a very different council up here, a lot of different members. And the world was a lot different than in two thousand sixteen than is today. We're in our fifth year of the post COVID situation. This is basically the time for all my colleagues, if you know, to really, if you have any questions, this particular time is the time for, for each budgetary item that comes in front of us. We're in revenues now and we'll get into the other departments or, you know, for, that Eric Mason has in front of us. Revenues, you know, you said it's kind of coming back to where previously to two thousand twenty. Just, just looking, you talk about the word inflation. And I, I think that that is a big, big word that has changed a lot of things. When we look at these budgets and people look at funding and they saw a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars is the same hundred thousand dollars post, pre, pre COVID. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. Salaries are very different, you know, in this day and age. Percentage jumps, it's, it's all different. It's changed across the board. I want you, if you can, to talk a little bit about two thousand twenty-ish, two thousand twenty-one, when they printed all this money and put it into circulation. I want to say forty percent new monies were put into circulation and just put out there. And now I can understand that we were going through a tough, tough time. And, but can you talk about the effect a little bit that it has when you go to the grocery store and, and eggs and bread and milk are all really high? But it's a trickle down effect. I, I, listen, I'm hearing this in every town, okay? Quincy's no different than other, we all have other issues. I think one of our biggest issues we've overcome has been the pension bond obligation that we, we over, we took care of four years ago. And we slid it in at the right time with the interest rate at two six, two, two point six two, which is unbelievable. Other municipalities out there cannot do that right now because it's, they missed, they missed the, they missed the window, I guess I could say. The interest rate has changed. It's not when we did, when we did it. When the mayor came in front of us and asked us for that, he picked the exact right time to do it. So in this particular year, it's a deal different. We'll get to that when we get to that. But can you talk a little bit about inflation? And why I'm thinking of this is, I don't even want to put Milton into it, Milton just had a tax override. They're going to add an extra thousand dollars on top of their thirteen thousand dollar, Braintree's going through it, Weymouth is going through it, Marshfield is going through it, Hanover doesn't want to do a tax override. Every single town around us has got a problem with schools. That's been the main issue, schools. How do you pay for? And then we don't have this conversation in the city of Quincy about laying off teachers, about cutting programs in the schools. That's a big issue across the board and all across the communities, three hundred fifty-one across the state of Massachusetts. But back to inflation, can you talk a little bit about how much we've, the United States has printed and put into circulation?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the day was actually the last day of the semester at the university that I teach microeconomics at. So I'm probably like talking about inflation more than any other human being. I'm pretty sure Chief of Staff Walker can vouch for me on that. Yeah, so there's this, what drop, what causes inflation? Well, everything causes inflation. You know, that's kind of the old joke in economics, right? If we look up at this chart, this top one is the CPI. You can see that massive year over year increase. Well, what really causes inflation? You know, people talk about printing money. And there's, one of the things I'll say to my, to my classes, if you print it, if you print five trillion dollars and put it in a room, does it cause inflation? The answer is no. It's exactly what you hit at, Counselor. It has to enter the market. And what happened is the Fed balance sheet rose to seven trillion dollars. It, it rose to being the third largest economy, like, that's a, I think at the time would have been the fourth largest economy just in dollars in the Fed sheet. And that's caused by federal spending. So the government goes out and buys things and it pushes the demand, the, the demand curve to the right. And when you push the man curve to the right, you increase prices. All change in prices is inflation. And that increased demand, the, you know, the federal government right now is making about twenty-two to twenty-four percent of GDP. That means a quarter of every dollar now in the US economy is being consumed by the federal government. And as you increase that expenditure, what you're doing is everybody then has to compete at those same prices that the federal government is paying for something. And if you look at precursor material, right, like, you may not buy a tank, but you buy stuff made of metal, right? And that precursor material then goes up in price. So if you go, if you want to go and you want to go buy a car, you're competing against those same precursor materials drives up the price of the car. So as you see more and more of that federal spending, that six point two percent of GDP deficit, that's about one point nine trillion extra dollars being spent. It's very hard to move that money back out of the economy. Has a name in economics, it's called Parkinson's syndrome. If that's when federal, the federal government spends a lot of money and it's very hard to pull those programs back. And what, that's what we're seeing right now, is that we're, this overconsumption by the federal government is driving up prices across the board. So we need to see a reduction in that deficit. And that can either be caused by raising taxes or cutting spending. But, you know, as, you know, as the federal government behaves or it wants, it wants to spend and spend more money, it's just drive up inflation. There's no way to reduce inflation by spending. That's, it's, it's an unfortunate reality and it would be, it would be very good if, if you could have an economy where you could reduce inflation by, by the federal government spending more money, but we just, we haven't observed that. So right now, we're still feeling those effects. And there's this, there, there was this word, this term during the pandemic, transient inflation. That was fascinating because I was unfamiliar with, with that phrase. Inflation is really transient. You don't usually have periods of deflation. You have periods of deflation after wars, where you produce beyond the production frontier, then everybody returns back. But those are called recessions. So right now, the only way to really tamper inflation is doing what the Federal Reserve does, which is keeping interest rates high and trying to tamper down some of that consumption expectations. But what, you know, exactly what you're saying, Counselor, that big increase right there, we may have seen that CPI increase go up and this is year over year. So this didn't, anything above that black line is an increase. So we're living after that huge jump. We saw a growth of inflation equivalent to, you know, pretty much a decade before. So we experienced a decade of cost increase in eighteen months. And that naturally translates to all these budgets across, you know, across the Commonwealth. And a lot of times it's being left with, you know, decisions made at the federal level, then trickling down in terms of these inflationary expectations, as you did, Counselor. And now we're trying to make decisions based on those and then combine it with potential cuts of federal aid.
You said the word trickle down. It's trickle down into the municipalities. I see it all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I don't want to have that conversation of, of teachers having to come in here and trying to save their jobs. Other municipalities across, neighboring town over, another neighboring town over, not Milton, they're going through it right now. They're going through this situation. Imagine having all these folks come in here, teaches you have to cut. We're not having that problem here in Quincy, Mass. So I, you know, revenue side, you say we're, we're a little bit better than since two thousand twenty, which is good, good to hear since we're, you know, the post COVID, we're in the five year mark. So I, I want to thank you for that. I'm going to get back to you when we get to long term and short term debt. But then we have all the couple of budgetary items in here before we get to that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell, Counselor Devine, and then Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, thanks for, for, it's very informative. I, I have just have a quick question. Someone brought up earlier about the S and P downgrade, negative downgrade, and, you know, some of the questions they had on that. Obviously, I think, you know, we're kind of in a zero sum world right now, right, where it feels like all the communities are in the same boat. How, how are we comparing to the other, you know, as far as positioning and things like that? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Counselor. So we didn't have a downgrade. We, we're still double A. But right now, due to the federal spend, the uncertainty of federal aid, virtually every municipality across the common, across the United States, not just the Commonwealth, is having their outlook changed to negative because, you know, if you exclude, if you exclude ARPA and federal grants, so if we just talk about, you know, federal, like Title One, CBPG, the, the city gets about twenty-five million dollars in that. And standard imports will look at that and say, oh, you could be experiencing a twenty-five million dollar shortfall. Well, that's a negative, that's a negative position. So that's why they apply these negative outlooks. We went through this after the, during the pandemic and actually had a conversation with one of our analysts at S and P because we had data showing that Quincy had a relatively low unemployment rate during the pandemic. We never went above ten percent. But they actually look at the data, the data on the county level and the county was at eleven point four percent. So we got a negative outlook then. And I'm, I'm talking to the analyst, really excellent analyst. And I said to him, I go, but I have this data. He goes, well, you only use county specific data. So you're, we already starting to see it, but we're starting to see negative outlooks applied to virtually every single municipality because the federal government, you know, provides so much aid to every single community, oh, fifty thousand municipalities in the country, that when you start, when that starts to get threatened, these, the rating agencies will say, they won't downgrade you, they won't move you from triple, from double A to single A, but they'll sit there and be like, we're going to put a, a negative outlook on this because we're concerned at what's happening in DC.
I'm assuming that, that's the wait and see approach, that, that they're taking the feds that just kind of, we don't even know what tomorrow brings, right? With the tariffs and, yeah.
Certainly, you know, Counselor, it's like uncertainty is the worst thing for any treasury or financial operation.
Yep, good. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counselor Devine.
Thank you. So you mentioned state aid and the state of Massachusetts is doing pretty well. So we're not too concerned about getting that state aid where we're at, is it?
Yeah.
Not like we are with the feds, I mean?
Yeah, I know. The, the state of Massachusetts is one of the most robust economies in the world. Actually, interesting fact, the Human Development Index, that's like the standard of a living index we use in economics, Massachusetts is the highest in the world, which is kind of cool. So we have a very intensified, very robust economy. And it would, I, I think one of the great things that, you know, Mara Healy did back in November is that budgetary reconciliation. I think it showed that even though, you know, we really do have these search, these cert tax revenue sources, we're not going to be, rely on them. And you can see they underestimated their cert tax, cert, surcharge tax, man, that's a mouthful, revenue by five hundred million dollars this year. So they're already building in a cushion, you know, as they're cautiously proceeding with federal grants. And I, 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 it's very admirable. I think they're doing an excellent job.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to make it clear, like, make it simple because people out there were kind of concerned about definitely federal, but I wanted to make it clear that the state's doing well. We, we clearly should be getting what we're looking for from the state, that we shouldn't have to worry about it. These things are very interesting to me. You know, we all, nobody likes to pay taxes. But we, we pay state taxes, we pay federal taxes. I want that to come back to us. And we do an exceptional job of collecting that. We have our own grant management department.
And they do very, very good.
I love them. They're, they're, they just get us so much money, so many grants. And those are the things that are really going to help us get through what everybody's worried about with the debt and whatnot. Like, we're, these funds that we find, these are what make us different than all the rest of these places. Like Counselor DeBona was saying about the neighboring towns, they, they don't have the ability to do what we do, we can, because we're just doing it better. We're, we're finding the money the right way. We're, we're spending a little bit of money in the grant department to bring in millions and millions. So I just wanted to make that clear for the people out there in TV land that, you know, the state of Massachusetts is doing well and we're, we're projected to get the money that we were hoping to get. And we have a grant department that's going to try and get us even more. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening, Counselor.
I have a question about a decrease that I'm seeing in the revenues and then a question about some increases, which is great. So I'll start with the decreases. So based off of the year to year projections, the historical actuals comparison report, specifically the mail's tax, it looks like even though we're projected to still bring in some more revenues before the end of the fiscal year, that overall, the last few years from twenty-two to twenty-four, we were projecting and actually seeing an increase in revenues from mail's tax. And this year, we're projecting a decrease, not by a ton, right? But we're going from last year's actuals were two point seven two two and this year we're projected to collect two point seven, which again, I know that you always estimate conservatively. So maybe we'll be getting more than that. I see you looking over at our auditor. So is this number?
So I have a different report.
Supposed to be higher.
That's a, this is actually one of the things Sue and I talk a lot about. There's only been three quarters collected this year. So we have one more quarter to collect for mail's tax. So mail's tax is actually likely to be greater than what its historical forecast has been.
Right. That's what I was just saying. I said, I know you usually forecast very conservatively to make sure that we're meeting our goals. And the reason why I brought up this specifically, obviously I'm biased, right? But, you know, it was mentioned here tonight that Quincy has a lot of industry and Mr. Rollin can attest to how many times I sat in his office, that unfortunately, right, splitting the commercial tax rate and residential is not as simple as it seems with the massive developments we have here in the city. It's residential. And based off of state law, unfortunately, those aren't taxes that we can go forward to offset for the commercial tax base we have. But I know when it comes to things like supporting local businesses, which we see a lot of, it's usually in the restaurant scene. And so I just want to make sure that the dip in mail's tax, or I'm sorry, the incorrect data I was looking at here, the reason why I was asking the question was making sure that there wasn't anything we should be concerned about because I do know, again, it's a, it's a blooming industry here in the city. I know we're very supportive of it. And I just want to make sure that there isn't any, anything happening there where we're seeing a decrease in mail's tax revenue.
Right now, if we see the same performance we saw in the final quarter of twenty twenty-four, if we repeat that this year, we'll be up about five point four percent, five point six percent mail's tax, which is, it's a night, it's a very healthy, I would say, for the market. But you're a hundred percent right, Counselor. There's certain statistics that are fantastic. Looking at the health of the economy, mail's tax is definitely one of them.
That's great. Awesome. Yeah. Keep supporting our local businesses. Thanks, everyone. The other thing I wanted to go to is the increase. So for business license and business certificate and building inspections, we're up over a hundred percent already and not even at the end of the fiscal year yet, right? So are you primarily seeing that come in because of, again, commercial businesses or is this primarily the residential side?
It, it's primarily the commercial side. There's a frequency in the replication, like, because it's so cyclical and as you, Counselor, because it's so cyclical of how businesses have to renew their licenses, that it actually provides, it sounds funny because, you know, I grew up in a small business family, right? My family owned a business here for seventy-five years. You talk about renewing your business license, you know, it's, you just do it at the same time over and over again. But once you have so many businesses in the city, even though they're all acting independently, it becomes like a nice baseline. And we tend to be very conservative on how we estimate that. And, yeah, we stayed conservative this year and we continue to see that push upwards. And that is obviously good.
And then the last question I had was for the overall revenues. We're seeing, again, conservatively, right, the way you estimate. If we collect everything we're supposed to right now, which I assume is going to be more when you're talking about the mail's tax and business licenses alone, we're five hundred thousand dollars over what we had projected originally. You made it a revision, actually. I see here that you, you expect we should be getting five hundred thousand even more than what we're projecting. And again, the actuals I know will be even higher. So just what, what would be, I think, I guess, like, top line, what's bringing in the increased revenue than projected? What's bringing in the increased revenue than projected?
There's a few parts. And I would say the first one has to do with property tax and tax title. So we had not done a tax title in about 13 years. And I, I do want to note that when we do tax title, we target income-generating properties and commercial properties. We, we generally do not target single-family homes unless they're abandoned. There's a blight issue. So these are properties that people are renting out to other people, they're not paying their property tax on, or they're commercial businesses who are charging fees and then not paying their taxes. So that's, that's what, that's what the city primarily targets. And our treasurer's done an excellent job of, A, doing the tax title sale, which brought in an immense amount of revenue. But then on top of that, now that people, it's like Carl Jung once, like, the observed worker is the most efficient worker. The fact that we do, that the treasurer's office continues to, you know, keep, keep people up to date on this, we're seeing an abundant overperformance in what we'd expect for the levy collection. Usually, you collect about 98% to 99% of your levy. Where, as you can see, we're already at 98% of personal property, right? And that really shows us that those efforts that the Treasury and Collectors Department's putting in, we're seeing that, you know, not to use the word again, trickle down to the bottom line. And the second is that despite the economic, larger economic uncertainty, we're still seeing people buying cars. We're still seeing people going out to dinner. We're still seeing people buy boats. And that type of consumption, you know, local receipts has over 70 lines in it. It's still, it's echo, there's little echoes in every one of those lines. So, yeah, it's, it's confidence in consumption, and it's diligent property tax collection by the treasurer. I'd say those are the two big ones that's leading to what is likely to be about a 1.5% to 2% overall revenue beat. And we're really early to say that. I just, you know, that, that's about where we'd probably expect to be year-over-year, or say compared to our revised budget assessment.
Okay, great. No, that's helpful to know. And honestly, I, you know, the, the ordinance of the treasurer just brought us recently to give even more tools for her to do, and already an amazing job, but to do it even better. I just, it's great, it's great to see it all come full circle, right, the way that it is tonight. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor, Chair recognizes Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Mason, for the presentation. I had some questions with respect to really the state aid piece of this. I don't know if I see, do we have the number expected next year for, I see the 25, but?
So that would be the first bullet point there, Counselor?
Okay, the 68.7.
The net state aid is 68.7 million.
Okay. And given the, you know, the uncertainty of the federal government and the new administration at the current time, I know it's hard for any kind of projection, but given that you live and breathe this kind of material, you know, if that number doesn't ring true, or say if we're, if we end up FY '27 not receiving close to that 70 million, do we have parameters in place for the taxpayers to make sure that, that, that gap in this budget is, does not fall completely and strictly on, on the homeowner?
Yes, and that's an excellent count, question, Counselor. And especially, I do, I, I watch the consensus revenue meetings. I find it fascinating. And you bring up an excellent point, which is, you know, that consensus meeting was in December. A lot's changed since December, as we all know. But they are constantly updating their models. And I'm going to actually steal a Chris Walker quote when it comes to how you'd address that, which, you know, you have a rainy day fund for when it's raining, right? And the city has these stabilization funds available, and these unreserved fund balances that in this. And that would be a very unique situation. State aid is rarely cut. Even during the pandemic, we received all our state aid. But in that event, this is why we have stabilization. And we would be able to bring to this body consideration to use some of that stabilization, unreserved fund balance, and other tools that would not result in a tax increase. I would actually, I'd be using tools that we have internally. But, but absolutely, Counselor, it's, it's something that we're monitoring very closely. Now, the state, through its, especially through, well, the House and the Senate, but the meetings, but especially in the Senate meetings, really did focus on, all right, this number we're going to tell communities, they need to be, have confidence in that number. So instead of saying, hey, you know, we're looking at 2.9, we're looking at a 2.9% increase in some revenues, even higher in some other revenue cases, we're going to go for a very, very conservative overall state aid of about 2.2%. Quincy, larger communities, we tend to get a little more Chapter 70, because we have this thing called transitional aid. And transitional aid is when you have a lot of non-English speakers in your school, it's additional funds that help, that help with that. So that's why ours is a little, is higher than that 2.2%. But the, the Senate was incredibly deliberate in answering that exact question, Counselor. Like, we need to make sure these cities, we can't go too aggressive on this. And we may see halfway through the year, the state come back and do supplemental state aid. That, that's happened in the past, and they give, you know, they increase that state aid appropriation. But as of now, they took a, what I would describe as a considerably conservative financial approach to this. I feel very confident in the number.
Thank you. And then on page, page 13, the, I'm sorry, of the, of the, yes, page 13, the, the last sentence you have there, it says, "The city's excess capacity is the seventh highest in all of Mass, keeping property tax increases in Quincy at just about half of the state average." Do you know what the state, what the average state increase, what the, what the increase average is across the state right now?
Right now, I, I don't, I do not, Counselor. I know we're ranked, on the, on the average increase, we're ranked 118th. And for percent, you know, that takes into percent households and stuff like that. If you look at median, we're even lower than 118.
Okay, it'd be great if you, if you do happen to find that number after the hearings. It'd be great to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions on revenue for Mr. Mason? He's going to be up there in a moment. He's not going anywhere for a while, so if you do have any, we can bring him back up. But Eric, thank you very much. Oh, I know that. I'm just thinking of this revenue. Jen's keeping an eye on me. I know, I just want to thank you for, for that recap. You know, I know a lot of us spend a lot of time coming in to see you, as we're always making moves to improve the city. And I know your, your crew has, has, has done a great job, so with that, I'll, um?
I have an excellent office.
Yeah, it's a real good, real good group.
Very hard workers.
And we can move right to municipal finance if we don't have any other questions. And you can go right into it, Mr. Mason.
Well, good evening, Counsel. So my budget is municipal finance. It's year-over-year, it's a $90,000 decrease. That's driven by two things. That's driven by we had a, a longtime head clerk retire, and we optimized a lot of our ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning munis, the thing that Sue and I live in 99% of the day. And we were able to optimize that to not have to fill that position. So instead of filling that position, we took the three other union positions, and we gave them a $10,000 stipend to, for that additional workload. So it net saved the city about $45,000. And the remaining savings, that comes from cutting a professional technical line by $55,000. The city was going forward with this digitized invoice system. It was a, it was a really good system. I spoke about it last, last year in front of the, the council. But in between last year and this year, our, the munis, Tyler, Tyler Technologies munis, our ERP system, they added new modules that were already part of our contract with them. And so we decided to pivot and say, you know, sunk cost fallacy, right? We, we had put time into this plan. We said, you know, if we develop this, we'll actually be able to cut our budget $55,000 and just use the system we already have in munis. So we decided to do that, and we're moving forward with the pilot launch. We already have several departments working on it. It's a, it's a cool system that allows our auditors to actually go in and not just click a line and see the journal. They can actually see a picture of the invoice, and a picture of the check, and a picture of the PO. So it's really, it, it really is optimized. So, yeah, we're requesting that that gets cut from the budget.
Any, any, oh, Counselor DeBonner, and then Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you, Eric, for saving the city some funding here. $90,000 roughly, $45,000 with that cut. I want to make a motion to approve. Thank you.
A motion made by Counselor DeBonner to approve municipal financing. Oh, on the motion, Counselor Ash?
Thank you. Just one quick question, Director Mason. For the administrative secretary, it's 512093 is the line item.
Yes.
It looks like there's about a $12,000 per, $12,000 increase for that individual salary, is that right?
Yep.
Are the job responsibilities and the job description for that role, is that also evolving with the higher-than-usual salary increase?
Yes, so that, that is part of that savings that I spoke about. You know, we, we cut the $75,000 position. And then we gave the admin secretary, the head clerk, and the business manager, what are the three union appointment, uh, the union positions in my office, we give them each a $10,400 raise to account for covering the extra work of the position not being filled. So it nets out to the $45,000 savings, $30,000 minus the $75,000.
And so the plan is not to, is not to rehire for that position, but everyone's moving up, essentially?
Exactly, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, motion by Counselor DeBonner, oh, Counselor Devine? Don't need to, we don't need to. Motion made by Counselor DeBonner, all those in favor, say aye. Post say no. The ayes have it. Thanks, Eric. Reserve fund, I believe.
Yes, so this is the one we pass every year.
Motion approved by Counselor DeBonner. Any comments on the motion? None, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Post say no, and the ayes have it. Unemployment compensation. Motion made by, oh. Go ahead. Counselor Harris, go right ahead.
Anything before with that line? I just, my, my question is, obviously, you know, I worked in, for the government for years, and, and we, you know, the $100,000, I see it across the board. Is that money that we have to pay into, is that the exact, I see how it's 100, 100, 100? Did we spend $100,000 last year?
Some years, we actually spend more, and we come back with an appropriation.
I get it.
But as you know, government, calculating unemployment for government is like very difficult to project. So that usually is a solid number, usually gets us pretty far through the year.
Right, so it's, it's just, and then we have to, you have to come back.
Yep.
Okay, that's, I was just curious, seeing it across the board.
It is bizarre to see, like, it repeated over and over.
Yep. Thank you, Eric.
Oh, is that Counselor Harris?
Yeah, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Harris to approve on the motion, Counselor Yang.
Same question.
Nope, same thing. We got a motion out there, any more conversation? No. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, and the ayes have it. Medicare.
The increase in Medicare is just the expected percentage in contribution that the city's required to pay through the federal projection for Medicare through FY '26.
Motion approved by Counselor Devine. No comments on the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Post say no, and the ayes have it. Long-term debt, Eric.
Yes, so long-term debt is primarily made up of the pension obligation bond increase that the mayor spoke about last week. Aside from that, there's a $2.2 million increase in long-term debt service that is primarily based on the borrowing associated with, we're converting over for the first tranche of borrowing for Squanum School, as well as a series of road project bonds that are expiring. But again, the vast majority of this increase is made up by the pension obligation bond increase, which is the city funding its unfunded pension liability through bond service, their debt service. Happy to take any questions on that.
Counselor DeBonner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of elaborated, so pension bond obligation, and that, that, that we, that we have, our roads, is that part of it?
Roads, schools.
Schools, Squanum School, okay. What is the percentage we were at overall? I know we, we have, you know, a long-term debt, but what is the percentage rate we have, like, percentage?
Yeah, so we split our debt into two, two, two parts. We look at general fund-supported debt. So that is your roads, your schools, the things, the things that are supported by the tax levy. And then we also support, then we have water and sewer, and then we have DIF, which is financed through downtown infrastructure. If we look at general fund-supported debt, it's about 7.1%. Now, if you take this number, if you take this number divided by the budget, I believe it's around 13%. But inside here, it's DIF, which is paid for separate, segregated funds in there. There is park, you know, there are different park projects in there that are paid through the hotel motel tax. There's MSBA projects that are in here that are paid through, you know, state subsidy. But they're still reflected in this number. So while this is the gross approval that, you know, we're requesting from this body, because this, we, all approval needs to come through this body for the power of the purse, there are other revenue sources. And, you know, the city council, it'll see in its appropriation, in its order, the first line on there is how much money that's going to come out of parks, out of the hotel motel fund to fund the park bond. In here is also CPA, is, Counselor, you were on the CPA for many years. CPA projects like playgrounds and such, that, well, you see the number here. There's going to be an account transfer that then offsets that debt obligation. So it's, if you look at our debt, and this isn't just the way we do it. If you look at our debt book online, we have inside and outside debt. And inside debt is your generally fund-supported debt. Outside debt is your debt that's, is supported by non-levy operations. So if you look at it from the inside-supported debt, you're in the low 7%. If you look at it gross, it's about 13%.
Talked a little bit about DIF and District Improvement Financing Fund in the downtown. I see a lot of work going on downtown right now. I'm driving by there all the time. Our grocer across from the General's Bridge, both sides of the General's Bridge, it's attacking. It's attacking, it's attacking, it's attacking. DIF, District improvement financing, how, so that's in this fund too? Is this in the long-term debt that we have to?
So part of it's in the long-term debt, and some of it is in the interest in short-term, so that the next budget.
Okay, so a combination. So you're doing the, we'll get to short terms, but you're doing just the bands right now for the short terms?
Yes, there are, there's about $28 million in DIF. And this is crazy, because when I started, you know, when I started the city 10 years ago, it's like, oh, you know, we're going to, that long-term borrowing is going to be years and years off. But no, we actually have some DIF bonds that have reached their 10th year, and they're now long-term bonds. It feels amazing to see that much progress done, but you can see it in the financial record too.
I, I can remember yesterday, The Economist, you were, you were going for that position. Remember that, this is very first year. So, and you've, you've come a long way, and you're very, very knowledgeable, and you're always continuing to, to get your knowledge out in workshops across the United States. So you really answered what I needed to understand a little bit more on the, on the, the long-term debt. And I'll get to short-term when we do. But you, you've answered all my questions, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remind me again what the percentage range is for our debt-to-budget ratio? Not ours, but the, the one that, that we should be following to be in good standing. What's, what's the range again?
So general fund-supported debt is usually between 6% and 7.5% is the margins we try and look at for that.
Okay, and what are we at right now for this, this coming fiscal year?
So this, yeah, this 7, it's a 7.1%.
7.1%?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Counselor Ash?
Thank you. Director Mason, I know I'm not alone. I'm, I'm sure all my colleagues have read and been reading the, the, kind of the news articles that always, I shouldn't say always, but seem to be published around budget time when we're reviewing these figures. Are you in a position to give me the, the actual amount of long-term debt that the city is in right now?
Yes, Counselor. And we do have a document that will be available online, the FY '26 debt overview. And so if we look at our long-term debt across all our disciplines, the city's long-term debt is about $1.045 billion. And one of the things in, in the parlance of this industry is that when we say bond, And one of the things in the parlance of this industry is that when we say bond, we're talking about just the bond value. So the pension obligation bond was 475, it's a $475 million bond. Interest will make it higher, it'll be above 575 million, but in similar, you know, if somebody has a $500,000 mortgage, you don't say they have a million-dollar mortgage, even though if you have a $500,000 mortgage, you're going to pay a million bucks for it. Yeah, so our long-term debt's about a billion dollars.
Okay, well, is this, will this PDF be online?
Yes, it will, Counselor, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that Counselor? Any other questions? Motion? Motion by Counselor Harris. No more comments, all those in favor? Against? The ayes have it. And Eric, short-term?
Short-term debt is primarily driven by the new Squonham School. As the council approved many new schools over the last several years. As you know, we have to take out short-term debt until the MSBA reimburses us, they're going to be reimbursing us about $60 million, but we'll be paying for that short-term debt. Obviously, interest rates are much higher now than they were three, four years ago when we did our, when we did Southwest Middle School. So this is just reflected, much of this $14 million in short-term debt is never going to become long-term debt. It's primarily involved around Squonham School, and the rest of this interest is primarily DIF, which as we know, I believe, 78% of this debt is DIF. And DIF's obviously paid for by downtown redevelopment. And then there is about 14% of this is horizontal infrastructure, roads, that will eventually become long-term debt, that's about $34 million, that'll eventually become about $1.6 million in debt service, but that will be a couple of years down the road. Right now, since there is such a large market consensus that there will be a rate cut in the next couple of quarters, the city's leveraging its ability to issue short-term debt to try and get on the back end of that rate decrease, which will even lower debt service even more.
Counselor DeBarna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, if you could, you talked a little bit about the rate cut. Is this the prime that's just nationally, or is that what you're talking about?
Exactly, so we're talking about the Federal Reserve interest rate, which is, trickles down to the prime. And, yeah, it's, right now, the market consensus is we're going to stay 92%, according to CME, we're going to be staying at above 4.25, 450 basis point range, right, above 450 basis points. What we're going to see, what, if we look to the fall, when rate cuts are going to come in, which is when we're going to be renewing a lot of these bands, a lot of people believe that you'll see a 25 to 50 basis point cut, which on a debt portfolio of this size, you know, that's cutting $1.2 million. And if we delay, if we try to long-term debt that now, we would lock in that million-dollar cost for the life of the bond, where instead we can delay. And if we, you know, delay that one period and we take that 50 basis point savings, you're going to be saving millions of dollars over the course of that bond, especially Squonham School, even more.
Overall, Mr. Mason, I've been hearing about this rate cut, everybody's been anticipating, 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 now you say fall. I thought it already would come to help out the housing market as well with the interest rates. So you're looking to see between a quarter to a half percent?
Yeah, so it's a decline.
Prime decrease?
Yep.
I mean, I think that would help a lot, I mean, people are all standing still right now with different things, they're staying in their houses because they have 2.75 interest rates and 3.0s, and they don't want to leave their house because they'd have to go to a 6.5 or 7%. This also is involved with what we have for short-term debt. You've answered really all the questions that I was looking to, where it was, where we have it planted. I know over the years you've done some consolidation of loans. Obviously, we haven't, do you anticipate, if a decrease of a half a percent, do you anticipate doing some consolidations of loans?
We could definitely explore it. Our strategic asset manager in our office, actually shortly before the rate hike started coming, he locked up virtually all our debt in those pre-rate hike, rate hike era, it saved the city, over the course of the next couple of years, it'll save the city about $13 million. And, you know, that's why it's a benefit to have, as you can see, my department is strategic asset manager, I'm going to say his name, Rakosha, because he deserves credit for it, but he very, you know, he's a, you know, he has a Series 7, he has all these, he's an expert, he did this in the private sector for decades, and knowing rate hikes were coming, he was like, all right, let's take all our debt, let's lock it in at a low rate, because you're naturally going to see a rate hike increase. And so we can refinance, but 90% of our debt portfolio at that time had been locked up in long-term debt at much lower rates, but we're going to keep targeting refinancing opportunities, and we have a great team that works on them, and they save millions of dollars every time we do them, so we're very, very open to doing them.
I want to thank Rakosha for a lot of his help, because me and you, the three of us have talked a lot about this offline, about the consolidation and refinancing these loans and getting that rate down. Not only that, it just saves you, you said $13 million over time. I know we did a lot of experimentation over the last few years when the rates are really low. Obviously, if we get a rate cut here, we have stuff on bands for one years, we can look to move some stuff.
Yeah, it's all about creating flexibility.
You guys have been very, very good, and we talk a lot, this offline, a lot, and hopefully we can continue to do that and save the city money.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to...
So we got a motion from Counselor DeBarna, I'm going to recognize Counselor Devine and Counselor Ash.
Thank you very much. This could probably be more for Commissioner Murphy, but I see here on the short-term debt that we have Pine Hill Cemetery.
Yes.
For about $5 million, is it? That, it's mostly done now, I believe, so is that a commodity? Like, when do we add that in to, say, like, I know we don't know exactly how many people are going to buy plots, which year, but we now have a, I will ask Commissioner Murphy later, but we do have something that we can sell now, it's not actually dead anymore, even though we have to pay for it, we're buying something that's going to have a resale value.
Absolutely, Counselor, you know, I hate to use the pun, people die to get in there, but, you know, at the end of the day, there's a fixed...
We don't want to use it, but it will be used.
Yeah, and it's a fixed amount of demand, right? Like, people are, unfortunately, it's something we all go through at one point, it's beautiful, I mean, I know you've been up there, Counselor.
Yeah, it's down there in Ward 4, right on the Braintree line, so that's my area, my constituents. I just happened to notice it, so I thought I'd like to talk about it, because I wasn't even thinking about it, so I can't imagine the general public's thinking this way, but yeah, we spent $5 million, but we're going to get money back for that, and it's huge. And they're already, once again, this is not really you, but the vaults are buried, so we're ahead of the progress, we've preemptively, which Quincy seems to do all the time, is that we do it a little bit better, so that when it comes time to use it, we have to do less to do it. Most cemeteries have to dig a hole and bury a vault, now all we have to do is scrape off a little earth, open the vault, and it's usable, so, but that's a commodity that we will be able to sell and use, and hopefully it will be worth more than $5 million.
Oh, I believe that will be, Counselor.
I believe so, too.
The gross estimated receipts, so total costs, I think are, if I remember correctly, is about $16 million in gross costs, and projected revenue is about $25 million.
Oh, wow. That's great, I mean, that's a big chunk of money. Yeah, so between the grant department and cemetery, we'll do all right.
When there's a lot more flexible demand.
Maybe a little more, a little more. Thank you for your services.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Ash.
Thank you. Just, Director Mason, if we do experience a rate cut at the end of the year, and this, this, of course, I just missed it, this $14 million number comes down, what would the process then be to determine what to do with those funds, just for the public maybe, and since we're speaking about potentially saving millions of some number of millions here? If you could elaborate on that, that'd be great.
Yes, absolutely, Counselor, so it goes down to processes. So right now, the bond, every bond in here is less than 365 days, that's what it has to be by law. We have some bonds in here that are 84 days, we have some bonds in here that are 364 days. The longer-term bonds, the ones that are, you know, 364 days, if we see a rate cut, we would see that savings in your FY27 budget, Counselor, you'd see that decrease. On the 84-day terms, or the 90 days, or some of the 120-day terms, you would actually, when that gets renewed, you would see the decrease in the budget this fiscal year. So I know everybody goes to Madam Auditor to get their year-to-date, but you see that year-to-date underperforming, which is a good thing, you could, you know, Sue and I would talk about it and say, okay, how much extra meat's left on the bone? And then the council could, I believe they would have to work through the executive office, but the council can then reallocate those funds if they wanted to mid-year. And we'd be able to, we would also give you, like, professional opinions from our Hilltop Security, our financial advisor, it wouldn't be something purely internal, I think Sue and I would kick it off with, what's the number, then it would get verified by our auditors and the financial advisors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, any other comments? Motion by Counselor DeBarna, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next up is Molly Smith, Treasurer. Good evening, Molly.
How are you guys?
Good, you can take us through your maneuvers there on the budget, and I'm sure they'll have a few questions.
Yeah, thank you for having me, I'm happy to be here and present the budget for the Treasurer and Collector's Office and answer any questions. So every year I start by thanking my team, we run a very lean operation, I currently have only eight people in my entire department. So this year I thought I'd translate what does that mean into numbers. So since the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1st, 2024, we've processed over 300,000 taxpayer payment receipts, funded over 113,000 payroll deposits, funded over 36,000 vendor payments, and completed 650 monthly bank reconciliations. It's an amazing amount of work that's done with only eight people. And really, the degree of accuracy in which my team completes it is astounding. These are really rough numbers, but we're completing nearly half a million transactions in a fiscal year. And for context, we ended FY24 with our entire city bank account balance and ledger balance reconciled to less than $100. So truly, a huge, huge thanks to my team. So starting on the treasurer's side, as we are talking about, the interest rate environment is not as favorable as it's been in prior years, so we continue to ensure that our rates on our accounts are as competitive as possible. We spoke last year about starting to invest in US Treasuries via a ladder structure, so rolling three, six, and nine-month durations. This strategy has allowed city dollars to lock in at a potentially higher rate as the Fed cuts interest rates. We made the decision to invest in US Treasuries about a year ago, and that move earned the city over $286,000 in additional revenue. On the tax collector's side, I'm really, really excited to announce that we formally partnered with PayIt, a new online payment platform. Quincy PayIt will have some awesome new features, including e-billing, auto pay, Google pay, Apple pay, Tap to Pay, pay by phone, and a snazzy new phone app that you can download. Residents can have their real estate, water, sewer, personal property, motor vehicle, boat, payments all linked to their account, and they can receive notifications and emails when a new bill becomes available. The site will show payment history, account balances and breakdowns all real-time. We'll be utilizing an API to ensure real-time flow of information back and forth to our residents. We're also introducing a new taxpayer payments brochure. I'll have some, I've got a little stack with me, I'll leave in the back tonight, but this will also be available on our website. Sarah, our Assistant Tax Collector, came up with this idea to better provide an overview of taxes and payments to make information access easier for our residents. With this new brochure, residents can quickly find information, learn how to pay bills, learn about the fiscal calendar year, when to expect that bills will be mailed out and more. Everyone, myself included, loves to cut out the yard waste schedule every quarter, so we hope this finds a place on everyone's refrigerators as a reminder, too. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on my budget, and thank you as always.
Thank you, Molly. Counselor Leeann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve and then just ask a couple of questions, if I can. Great, thank you. Hi. I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing, I know I sort of like shouted you out when you were sitting in the audience, but I think, again, it's, I think it's a good moment to recognize again how the work really does come full circle, right? And you were just in front of us for an ordinance that clearly will have a very positive impact moving forward and making sure that revenues are, you know, collected in hand and processed the way they should be, it's not a fun job, but it is important, right, to stabilizing, obviously, the finances in the city. I think, you know, you do run a very tight ship with a very small crew, and it's very impressive. And I just want to ask for the brochures, and I see the communications line is up, which is fantastic, and, you know, I always ask when it comes to communications that it be made available in multiple languages, so I just want to make sure that's the case with this brochure as well.
Yeah, and so it's certainly something, and we have, and I always think that this is a huge asset to my team, we have multiple language-speaking people collecting payments. So a lot of our population is unbanked, and so that's something that we always keep in the back of our minds as we move to new apps, I want to make sure that this is not something that's just for the 20, 30, 40-somethings. I want this to be, we get a surprising amount of feedback, can I pay over the phone? And there's regulations that I won't quote, but there's regulations, I can't take a credit card over the phone, we're not a secured site, we, there's rules that you need to, and cameras, and there has to be things set up in order for us to do that. So I want to make sure whatever we're doing, we're targeting many, many different iterations of our population, so whether that's non-English speakers, whether that's unbanked, our unbanked population, or whether that's people who just want to set it and forget it, they just want to auto pay and not look at it. I don't look at my Verizon bill every month, it just comes right out of my bank account, and so I'd like to do that for us, too. So yes, that's certainly something that we're, PayIt is slated, I think they can do many, I'll have to get back to us with that number, but that's something that they can offer in many different languages.
That's great, thank you, I mean, I get, I just, I think that you're always thinking so many steps ahead, and you reduce the barriers of entry and access for folks to, you know, to pay their bills on time and to understand what they're paying, and, you know, there were comments made tonight about the value of our department heads, and I think it is very clearly obvious that you're more than worth, you know, what is in this budget today, and I think you just do a tremendous job.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
So thank you to you and your team, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Kane?
Chair, the unbanked population, this is interesting, what is the percentage of residents that are unbanked?
I wouldn't know for sure, we have a very high volume of all cash transactions, and so whether that's because you're unbanked, or whether that's because you are trying to avoid the transaction fees. So it's 50 cents to pay an ACH, so maybe you've decided you've got cash and you'd like to come down and pay in person. So we have a very, very high rate of people coming in and paying with, paying their tax bills with cash.
What's that percentage?
Oh, gosh, I could try to do some digging, it's hard to, I could do some digging by...
Just curious, yeah, especially the unbanked.
By payment type, I wouldn't know if they're unbanked, but I would know if they're paying in cash.
Got it. And the unsecured site, not being able to take payments over the phone, what's that process look like?
So for this, we would send them, so PayIt offers an IVR, something, voice recognition, where you're reading your credit card number into a recorded line, and it's recognizing your payment that way. So we cannot, and if you're watching at home, please don't give people on the phone your credit card number, you don't know what the setup is on the other end of the phone. We joke, you don't want to give me your credit card number, I could put it in my Amazon account, of course, like, that's a joke, I'm not doing that, but you want to make sure that the person on the other end of that transaction is verified and secure, and so that's something that we hear a lot of, and we want to make sure that we can offer that, too.
Got it. Now, the, I mean, obviously, the cash thing is, we went through a thing, and I'm just thinking of a place like Fenway Park, that you can't even use cash there anymore, so, you know, what are more stringent safeguards we can put in place to reduce?
Yeah, and it's kind of a catch-22, because I am the tax collector, I will take payments in whatever way you would like to give them to me. So I don't want to deter people from coming in and paying with cash if that's all they have available to them, but at the same time, we do, an in-person transaction is going to be a more expensive transaction for the city, we're funding personnel in place, we're funding, and we have a Brink's armored car pickup, come pick up the cash, we're funding, it's overhead to reconcile the bank accounts. So to the extent that we can not deter, but encourage more online payments, we certainly would love to do that.
I know you have a lot of data, do you know the cost per transaction that we're currently incurring?
So it's hard to, it's hard to figure out, and I mean, I just rattled off a lot of numbers, the targets move so frequently, there's also a ton of overhead costs, so if you're looking at healthcare, right, so you're looking at health insurance for all of these employees, you're looking at lighting in my office, you're looking at, right, so there's so many things that you can't even, I couldn't even begin to dive into. And again, that's not what we're here for, we're here to serve our residents, and so in whatever way that needs to be, sometimes we are a therapist, and we have people crying in my hallway about their struggles, and we're working with them, and so sometimes they're just looking for an ear to cry on, or that's their outing, coming in to pay their tax bill, and so they want to chit chat, and so that's what we should be here for, we're here for efficiency, but we're also here for, we're public servants, and so I hear a lot of, we should run it like a business, I actually disagree, I think we should run, at least for my department, I think we should run it in a really purposeful way.
I agree with you, business and government are not the same, but at 500,000 transactions per year, you're saying, with your budget...
I'm sorry, half a million.
Oh.
500,000. I'm so nervous, I hate coming up here, no offense to you guys.
My brain just melted a bit.
No offense.
It was a six and a half, one, what do they say, six and a half, one, half a dozen another, yeah, yeah, sure. So five, half a million transactions a year with 1.5 million budget and eight people. Okay, cool, thank you.
We're pretty lean, so we, they do an amazing job.
And reconciliation is under $100.
It's incredible, Katie is incredible.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Campbell, then Counselor Devine?
Just quick, Molly, you just, I think President Kane really brings it up, the amount of work that you guys do, and I think that the evolution of what you've done, I think, has been impressive, and I'll step out of the way and let you talk about PayIt for a minute, only because if you've ever tried to pay online, you know, as residents, Ena and I were just talking about how, you know, we're neighbors, so we're paying the same bills everybody else is paying, so when you go in to pay for these things, it's incredibly, it has been in the past, challenging sometimes, you know, when you're archaic in certain challenging sometimes, you know, when you're archaic in certain ways. I think the Pay It thing has really taken it to the next level. Are there other communities using it as well, or...
So we are going to be the first municipality in Massachusetts that's using it, which I'm really excited about. I think Quincy, we're not afraid to be the first doing anything, which I think is, is really cool. I think they're the first ones, and this is where, I was getting nervous someone's recording this at home and is going to fact-check me later, but we'll be using an API. And so our ERP system, Munis, and Pay It, there's going to be this API that sits in the middle of those two, those two systems, and that's going to bounce data back and forth, real time, all day, every day. So right now, I took a phone call today from a taxpayer, they got an abatement, and the bill on Unipay, the amount was wrong. Unipay batches overnight, and so we send, and it's, it's super manual. We send Unipay a file, and it posts at 3:00 in the morning, and that file is stagnant. So whether you make a payment, whether you get an abatement, that's the number. And so you have to wait until it batches overnight. With this API, it'll feel, feed real time. We have a lot of, like, spouses that pay, the husband pays the bill, and then the wife pays the bill, and now you have two real estate payments, because Unipay doesn't recognize those, those two transactions in one day. So we're refunding a payment that really shouldn't have been made in the first place. If we had something that was feeding real time, that would have been recognized by the system right away. So Unipay has been a wonderful resource to us. They are, they've been great. They were like the first game in town, I think, for municipal payments. But we get the feedback all the time. Can we, can I just pay this online? Can I just get the bill emailed to me? So I'm really excited about it. As a, as a resident, I'm excited about it, so it'll be awesome.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devine.
Thank you, Molly, for coming in. It sounds great about the catching it before it happens, because it's, I'm sure it's happened to many people, is two people withdraw money and all of a sudden you get a debit, a debit, and you have a fee. It could be frustrating, and I'm sure they would love to blame us if they both made the payment, so it's going to make it easier. But I was going to ask you, can you, I don't, what is a printer, printer, banker, messenger? What is?
Yeah, and that's a great thing to point out. So we are, so right now, we have the mailroom that reports to me as well. So we have three male clerks, male couriers, that report through me. Two of them are paid under my budget, one of them is paid under DPW's budget, and so this is just a net-net zero line item move. So we're taking him out of DPW and moving him to me. Mostly because, to be honest, it's annoying when we put in his time off, we have to email someone else.
Yeah, nice. And then, like you said, to the people out there, if you do receive this flyer, definitely keep it. Many people do not keep the DPW flyer, and then they call and they say, oh, when's this? Or, hey, how come my trash didn't get picked up? And it's like, oh, look on the side of your fridge, you should have a nice little thing that says, that's it. So I can't wait to see the flyer and...
Yeah, I'll leave some out here, and we've printed 500, so to the extent that there's feedback, let me know before I print 26,000.
Yeah. And thank you for being so forward-thinking. You've brought a lot of great ideas to the council. I, I think all our councils would agree that you've had some good ideas and...
Thank you.
Came to us, and sometimes we're thinking, why, why didn't anybody think of that sooner? But thank you for your, your hard work, your team, and the diligence.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor DeBarnett, then Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, Molly, thank you for your technological upgrades. It's going to be a help for folks out there to make it a little more easier and accessible, and make them, allow them to make the payments on time faster, you know, just not having a, some folks are old-fashioned, they want to come in here to City Hall and pay you, but this will be great that you, you've done this and moved, moved our, moved our city forward in the right direction. So thank you for all your hard work and your presentations over the last few months. Forward-thinking, so thank you for everything you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Ash.
Thank you. Counselor Devine actually stole my question, so I am, I don't have one, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and the many discussions that we've had over the last year and a half about taxes in the city and your role, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion made by Counselor Yang. Any more comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it. Thanks, Molly, we'll just do tax title. Motion approved by Counselor Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it. Thanks, Molly, thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening, councilors, thank you for having me. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to take, to thank my staff in the Assessors' Department for all their hard work and dedication to serving the public. The Assessors' Office is responsible for valuing over 74,000 parcels of real estate and personal property. Excuse me, 27,000 is a parcel of real estate and personal property. The department is also responsible for administering 74,000 motor vehicle and excise tax bills. Switch up there. In our department, we strive for accuracy as the only way to ensure that all constituents are taxed fairly and equitably. To best ensure our accuracy, our department is over exploring new ways to audit our property data, whether it be through the property inspection process, sales listings, aerial imagery, and annual information request for data. Each year, our department goes through a certification process with the Department of Revenue to make sure our assessments are at their full and fair cash value in accordance to Massachusetts general law. While the certification process is one of the most important aspects of our department, it is equally important that we are equipped to defend the city's assessments in the abatements and appeals process. This budget presented tonight ensures that our department will be equipped to defend the state's certified assessed values and reduce the city's liability in the abatement process. Along with valuation, the Assessors' Department is responsible for overseeing all property tax exemption programs. There are a number of exemptions that qualified constituents can receive to reduce their tax bill. The city has exemption programs for seniors, legally blind property owners, widows, widowers, minor children and deceased parents, spouses of police and firefighters killed in line of duty, and our disabled veterans and their spouses. This year, we are adding a new line in our budget to fund the added local option exemption levels for our veterans, which this body voted on last September with the HERO Act. With the two veteran exemption clauses that were adopted, the veteran exemptions will see a cost of living adjustment of 2.9% this year, and then that amount will be doubled given 100% increase off the COLA. Veterans who received a $400 in tax assistance this past year will receive $823 next year. Veterans who received $1,000 in tax assistance last year will receive $2,058 tax assistance. Each year, our office mails out exemption applications, forms to all who applied in prior year. And last year, we introduced a new online exemption application form, created enhancements to our website to provide e-forms for all constituents to review and fill out these forms. Not all constituents have the ability to fill it out by themselves, they need the assistance of family members, and using this website allows family members, even that aren't close to home, to still assist their parents and anybody who's in need for this exemption. I take great pride in all the work my department does, providing assistance for our seniors and our veterans. I'd like to thank all of you for your continued support and happy to answer any questions.
Motion by Counselor Kane. Any, Counselor Yang?
Quick question. Hi, I, for the education pay line, can you just explain why we're looking for a little bit more on that line? What it goes towards?
The education pay line was added this year from the Finance Department. I'm not for the, for the employees that qualified for it.
Okay. I think for, in the past, when we have looked at education pay lines, it's to help steward any, like, sort of advancement that...
Excuse me?
I said, I think in the past, when we were looking at education pay lines, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's to basically steward any staff members who want to go and take any, like, educational courses, right? Is that what this is for? Back to support the, it's for the union? Okay, okay, and that's, but that's what it's for, is to support the staff if they want to go for, like, any additional educational opportunities? Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, other than that, it's just, I was looking at your bottom line, and your increase for the bottom line is just under 300,000, but you added 300,000 to support the veteran exemption, which we voted for. And so just, yeah, I, I think this is, again, like we were saying with Molly, do a lot of work that you do to make sure that residents understand where their money's going and understand the exemption opportunities and payment opportunities. I mean, there's just a lot that I think goes through your office, just from the time that I've sat down with you, right, that needs to be, you know, explained more than once to folks. You sort of need to hold their hand through the process and make sure that they're comfortable and understand what's going on. So, you know, the fact that you came in essentially under budget, save for what we approved to support veterans and the exemptions that they have, this is, you do good work, and I appreciate it, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. We had a motion by Counselor Kane, but I'm going to recognize Mr. Walker for a second.
Very brief, Mr. Chairman, Counselor Yang raises a good point with that question relative to the education. Compensation that councils may see pop up in department, after department, a few different ones, that is a, a union negotiated benefit that you'll see run throughout this budget. Increases, slight increases in some, in some places, but that it, that does run throughout the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion made by Counselor Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Human Resources.
I had to get one, Counselor.
What, we got three? Three motions to approve? All right, I'll go with the motion to approve. Any, any comments on the motion? You have a comment, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, Patty, thank you very much for coming in. I feel really bad because your, your line items stay exactly the same, and you always sit back there peacefully and quietly. I feel like we should give you a pass next year and just let you sit there.
I'll take that.
I mean, I know there is an uptick on some of the medical stuff, but that's just normal things. So thank you so much for coming out and sitting there patiently.
You're welcome.
I feel bad that we all passed you right away.
No worries, thank you.
We love seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have health insurance. Motion approved by Counselor Yang.
We didn't vote on the first one.
We didn't vote on the first one? All right. We got a motion by Counselor Yang on human resources. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Health insurance, motion by Counselor Yang, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right. Done, Patty, good.
Thank you.
Kev, can I, can I, can I just pull up a couple of quick ones, and then we'll bring you up, because I know you'll probably be the longest one, and I know you've been there long, and I, I appreciate it. But could I just have purchasing come up? Followed by the solicitor? And then I'll bring, I'll bring human, I'll bring the education up. Motion approved by Counselor Kane. On the motion, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, no?
Thank you.
All set.
We should get you all passed next year, too.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, James.
Members of the council.
Motion approved by Counselor Kane. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, no, and the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For...
Workers' comp.
Same guy. Motion to approve by Counselor Kane for workers' comp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, no? And then we have court judgments. Motion approved by Counselor Kane. All those in favor, say aye. Posed, no, and the ayes have it.
Thank you, councilors.
Hand the table, Jim.
Thank you, Counselor Kane.
Ally, come on up.
No filibustering for you. Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Devine. Any comments on the motion? Comments on the motion? Counselor DeBarnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to thank Emergency Management Director Ally Sleeman for all your hard work over the last year with a lot of displacements of fires out there and different things that have happened throughout the city. Your job is very important. I know in the exception, inception of your position was very important after the floods of 2018, and you've done a great job ever since. Thank you. Happy to support this.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming in today. I, I had one quick question. When you move in, is, to the new headquarters, is, you don't need any more money for that, or is that in the headquarters' budget?
Everything was included. We, we get grants yearly for the EOC upgrades, so we'll continue to upgrade, upgrade the communications equipment in the EOC.
Yeah, because everything seems to be the same, so that's great.
Yeah.
And thank you for all your service and hard work. I know, we don't, hopefully don't need to use you much, but I love the fact that, I know you have everything ready to go if we need you, so thank you for being there.
Thanks.
All those on the motion? Counselor Ash, quickly.
Director Sleeman, thank you for coming in. I know we, we talk often about kind of the forever compressor station and your role with respect to the city's mitigation plan. I just, I guess, I want to say thank you for that comprehensive plan. I know that the plan that we have as a municipality to essentially respond to any emergencies that may come out of the forever compressor station. I know last time we spoke, I don't think you were aware that surrounding municipalities shared our comprehensive plan or had one like their own. I guess I would just ask if you've noticed any updates over the year to that plan? If, if there's, if anything has changed with respect to the plan that we have in place?
So our plan is pretty comprehensive. We've shared it with all the surrounding jurisdictions, they've seen it, I've discussed it with their personnel, their public safety officials. Waymouth has a plan that I know of, so, you know, we talk with Waymouth regularly and kind of keep an eye on what's happening over there.
Thank you.
So a motion by Counselor Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it. Thanks, Ally.
Thank you.
The best for almost last, right? Thank you, Superintendent, for hanging.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great, thank you so much. Again, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. It's great to see you, and thank you for the invitation to present to you tonight, presenting with me, of course, as always, is Dr. Perkins, Dr. Aaron Perkins, Assistant Superintendent, as well as our Senior Director of Business Affairs, Mr. James Mulaney. And of course, I always want to thank them for all the work that they do, as well as the SLT in preparing this budget for you tonight. The last year was a great year in the Quincy Public Schools, and that is due in large part to your support and the support of the mayor and the school committee. And so I want to make sure, right out of the gate, I thank you, the mayor and the And so, I want to make sure right out of the gate, I thank you, the mayor and the school committee, for your support in the budget process. Again, last year was an excellent year. We saw the RDLC, or the Dr. Richter Cristofaro Learning Center, come onboard, and it exceeded our expectations. I know the expectations of the school committee, and I think the expectations of the community. This is a school that allows for our students with autism within the city and other disabilities to call the RDLC their home community, something that is rarely seen in the state, much less across the country. This is something that Quincy is on the forefront of, and again, that's due to your support and the support year in and year out of the school department. We also are seeing, as many of you have already seen, the development of the new Squanam Elementary School. Again, thanks to your support. That school will be a top-notch elementary school, as with all of our other schools within the city. If you have a chance to take a look at the designs, you'll see that it is a magnificent building that will serve the community in Squanam for many, many years. And of course, it will be, you know, state-of-the-art facility for our students and our staff, which is most important. And I do want to highlight, because of your support, among other things that are happening within the school department, and there are a great many things happening, and I can't name them all, but one of the great accolades we have this year, again, because of your support and the support of the mayor and the school committee, is that Quincy, of the 25 largest districts throughout the state, is number one in teacher retention and staff retention in the state. That is really an incredible stat that I think we need to let you know and let the community know, that our employees in the school department want to teach, want to work in Quincy. And again, that's a testament to all the support that you give us through the budget process year and in year out. Those are just a few highlights, and of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I just want to quickly go through the budget process, and then I'll hand the presentation over to Dr. Perkins and Mr. Mulaney. The budget process, as you know, we identify areas of consideration in the budget across everything we do within the Quincy Public Schools. Not only our professional staff, but our non-professional staff, our curriculum, our programming, of course, making sure that the students in the city of Quincy are at the center of every decision that we make, and of course, our staff as well. We review, we organize options to address possible areas of impact. Of course, we review that with our school committee as well. We prioritize possible areas of increase, shift, and reduction to maximize our staffing and productivity within the school department. Of course, we determine the impact on budget area and lines based on the budget that's presented to us by the mayor and the city council. Of course, we present to the city council, which is where, what we're doing here tonight. Next week, we'll be presenting options to the school committee with regard to our programming and budget. We, of course, will prioritize these options and work with the school committee to work to prioritize their options as well, again, to maximize all of the offerings that we give to our students and staff. We rework these options, and then finally, we determine, finally, the final options for the budget, and of course, we execute on that as we have. Again, I have to thank the mayor and the city council for providing us an excellent budget, a budget that will allow us to continue all the important services that we provide our students and families here in the Quincy Public Schools. I know a couple of councillors have mentioned here tonight the troubles that other cities and towns are having throughout the state, many of them very close to us here in Quincy. I'm happy to report that we don't have that issue in the Quincy Public Schools, again, thanks to your support, the support of the mayor and the school committee. So, again, our budget is very healthy. It will allow us to continue all of our programming in advanced areas as well through reorganization and reprioritization of the very generous budget that the school department received this year. With that, I'll hand the presentation over to Dr. Perkins.
Thank you, Superintendent Mulvey. So, as the superintendent mentioned, we are, you know, very, very thankful that we're here tonight, letting you know that the budget, the proposed budget, funds all positions that are currently being paid for from the Quincy Public Schools. So, as the superintendent mentioned, unlike other surrounding communities, we are not here talking about cuts or layoffs, and for that, we are extremely grateful. We're grateful for your support and for the support of the mayor and the school committee. But there will be, in order to maintain our budget, maintain the wonderful services that we have in place in the Quincy Public Schools, there will be shifts in personnel to address class size and academic programs. So, an example of that is that we have a position that we'll be adding to Lincoln Hancock that will be coming from Montclair. So, because of class size numbers, we are able to reduce Montclair by one position, reallocate that position over to Lincoln Hancock where they need it because of class size enrollment. So, we'll be making moves like that. We are, another example is moving an EL position from the high school level down to the elementary to help out over at Wallaston Elementary School. So, we'll be making shifts like that, but all of, we're very happy to report that all of the current positions are already currently in our budget and being paid for, and will be continued to be paid for with this new budget. The budget does also assume that federal funding for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, in Title I will not be reduced. That is our plan right now. That's what we've budgeted for. And, you know, some of the things that we're just really, really grateful for, that we're still able to maintain with this budget, as the superintendent mentioned, is the Dr. Richter Cristofaro Learning Center, which currently has 48 students placed in that building, having a really, really wonderful year with really happy families and a really wonderful sense of community. And we are projected, I'm very happy to announce that we are projected to have 54 students in the K to eight side next year. And just to remind you that these would have been tuitions that can range anywhere from $75,000 to hundreds of thousands of dollars, with a minimum probably of around, for those that are transported, about $40,000 for transportation. So, you know, we're already seeing the, the fruits of all that hard work, and, and we know that the families in Quincy are very grateful that they're able to keep their students in, in the city. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Mulaney.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. I guess it doesn't work. The budget that we'll be presenting to the school committee, and we're putting before you right now, will total $146,634,627. This represents a $4,198,160 increase from the FY 2025 budget. And the budget funding comes from two main sources, plus the reduction in one. The major source is the appropriation from the mayor's office, which is before you now for approval, of $138,384,627, $4.198 million, or a 3.13% increase. We're projecting circuit breaker fundings. That's a reimbursement for special education tuitions. That, $8.35 million, that's a million-dollar increase over the prior year, based on the increase in the tuition costs that we've been paying. And the elimination of S R three funding, last year, we used $101 million to offset other expenses. So, for fiscal year 2026, we started with the fiscal year 2025 budget of $142,536,467. We have negotiated increases in our salaries for step and level increases. There is no percentage raises in here of $1,278,260. And then there was additional funding to address areas of deficit in the fiscal 2025 budget. Special education aids, these are aids that we've had to put on during the year for the needs of our students, whether it be a one-on-one, $550,000. Special education out of district tuitions of $750,000. Over the past four years, we've seen rises of 24 to 58% in each of these tuitions, while our funding has remained the same. Special education in district transportation. We have many programs that require our students to be transported, and we have to use a lot of outside vendors. These are students that would not be transported on a regular large bus or the mini buses of $1 million. And substitutes, the, there was an increase of 50% in the long-term substitute pay, and this has been a line item that's been in deficit for many years, of $519,000. So, that's a total of $2,819,900 for projected level service budget of $146,634,627. Offsets against that, $8,350,000 for circuit breaker. We're anticipating salary savings, breakage for retiring teachers, about 20 teachers retiring. The highest levels would be about $45,000 savings per individual for a $900,000 savings. And then we'd have to add back the elimination of the S R three funding of $1 million, so it'll net offsets of $800,000, $8,250,000. And then the appropriation that would be needed from the city, which is the one that the mayor has generously proposed, of $138,384,627.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Motion to approve, Mr. Harris? Councillor Harris? Recognize, Councillor Devine?
I just heard you say about, you know, a retention rate for teachers. We also have generational family members that are teachers, which I think is pretty cool also. Lincoln Hancock itself has one that I know of, and I'm sure that's not the only, and...
We have several. Many, many, actually.
Yeah. Which is great, that they're, they're staying here in their hometown. I love it. And the addition of the Cristofaro School with more children coming in. I mean, the money's great to save, but at the end of the day, just thinking about these families that don't have to travel so far, or that the parents are going to be closer to their child. I couldn't imagine, you know, having a child maybe in the Perkins School up in Brighton or something, Newton, I think it is, and having to go there if they were sick. You know, like, it's nice to know that you're just right around the corner if you're home. And we also, Lincoln Hancock, you mentioned, we just, I don't know if you saw any pictures yet, but we had a nice ribbon cutting for the outdoor classroom. It was great. It was nice to have the ability to have the Jason Eagle Scout do that project there, and it was collaborated between everyone. Principal Loftus is great. She was a teacher before, and I was glad to see that she has moved up, because I feel that she has a, a good touch with all the people there. She's not just somebody that just came in from nowhere, so...
She's a great principal.
Yeah. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. And we will be honoring Jason as well at school committee.
I heard that, yeah.
So, unfortunately, we had negotiations with the teachers' union tonight, so we couldn't make it, but we will honor Jason at school committee, and it's a...
Well, I ate all the candy you saw you. You didn't, you wouldn't have gotten it, son.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah.
Thanks, councillor. Chair recognizes Councillor Yang.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to start by saying thank you to all three of you. We talked a little bit tonight about folks doing a lot with a little, and I think just, you know, given your track record, for all three, you guys make a really solid team. I think the challenges that we're facing in our schools right now are not unique to us, but with an ever-changing population, ever-changing needs and unknowns, right, from outside factors, I think that overall, we can really be proud of the safety and frankly, the work that you all are doing to provide for our schools and, and for our kids. And so, I just want to lead with that and put that out there, because what I have to say next has nothing to do with you, but I feel I need to say, because we are currently voting on or approving the single largest appropriation line item for the entire budget, or the single largest department budget. And, you know, we are then approving that, hoping to then hand it off to the school committee, who's going to be evaluating how those funds will be spent, and I'm, you know, just continuing to be disappointed by their decision-making process, particularly around Lunar New Year. And I just want to thank, you know, school committee member Courtney Pertios, and school committee member Doug Gutter, and of course, the mayor, for their thoughtful leadership over the years. And again, I know this has nothing to do with you, which is why I wanted to make that very clear, but again, just as I sit here and as we're going through budget deliberations with a budget as large as this is, this is the single largest vote that we will take. And so, I just can't help but, you know, want to support the work that the three of you are doing in your leadership, but also with that, just be really clear that the disappointment is, is right there as well, unfortunately. But thank you for your work. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. So, we have a motion by Councillor Harris, just before we go. Can you give me that 25 district thing again? Kev, number one, just a little...
Sure. The Quincy Public Schools are number one in the 25 largest school districts.
In the state?
In the state.
I hope that makes the ledger. Make sure, Petey, you get that in. Number one. That should be the headline. Get, write that down.
Say it again.
No, that's, that's unbelievable.
It is, it's great.
You know, I know, all the hard work. I mean, I, you know, we could go on and on, as Councillor Yang said, you know, you guys do a great job, it's a great team, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your...
On the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, and the ayes have it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. City clerk. I had to throw something at that guy. I didn't have enough people. Good evening, Mr. Newton.
Actually, I just wanted to take a quick comment on, you know, the staff at the Elections Department, the clerks, and the License Board, but I also get to thank the clerk now, and the great job that she's done with those, these four departments we're going to be talking about. So, the budget here is pretty much level-funded, and other than any kind of contract negotiations with the union, so...
Motion to approve by Councillor Harris?
I understand.
On the motion?
Why? Say that?
You're going to say it loud. I'm getting deaf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That's clerk. Elections, Joe?
Yes, it's the same. The elections are level-funded.
Motion to approve? Councillor Harris and Councillor Devine? All those in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion to approve? Elections, Councillor Ash?
Thank you, Assistant Clerk Newton. It's nice to, nice to see you. Thanks for hanging in there. My, my question was with respect to voter outreach. We hear a lot as an elected, as an elected body that voter turnout's low in the city.
Well, actually, that's not correct.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you could maybe, maybe dispel that for me, would be great.
So...
And, and also maybe highlight some of the city clerk and the election department's efforts with respect to outreach.
Sure. So, we do outreach on, on a few different things. We go to the Lunar New Years, and we go to, we, we do go out and do outreach, but there's a, there's a difference between outreach and getting our message out, which we do. You know, the clerk goes on cable TV. We send out, there's several letters that go out, some by the state, some by the feds. We have the vote by mail that goes out now, and everybody gets a letter who's a registered voter, so the outreach is there. On the part that we have a low turnout, I disagree with that, and the reason I'd say that is because, you know, I heard somebody mention us, like, you know, Harvard, Mass had a better turnout than us. Well, it does. It's a very small neighborhood. When you look at the major cities and you look at Quincy, we're right up there, probably the second, right behind Cambridge. So, we do a really good job, and it's because of the staff, but we do. Those numbers just, it seems a little different, but unfortunately, we do have a large amount of commuters and people who are here, and they don't vote, and we, we try to reach them, and we... Now that the registry makes you sign, everyone who changes the license gets a card, you know, it comes through our office, and it gets mailed out. So, you know, the clerk has her staff doing a really, a really good job on pushing it. You know, we, we put our signs out, we, we did a little bit more on that last year. We hit a little bit more intersections, and, you know, the coordination of that, it's funny, because we're, we are an office here, but we don't really get out on the road. You know, we have two guys that go around, and they, they hit, you know, with 31 polling areas, and they're very difficult to get into, because like, again, this year, the election might be the day after Labor Day, and it's, it's really tough to get into every, you know, every school or every building, and the schools need to use them, so it's not like we can go in there a few days in advance. But it is, no, I'm proud of how well the city does when you look at us compared to other major cities. It's pretty impressive.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I know you're up here, Joe. I just want to thank you guys for everything you guys do in elections. It's, it's difficult. It's difficult to do, and you guys have done a great job with getting on QA TV, getting the message out in the newspapers, all the things in the channels that you guys do. One thing that you did that was really good this past year or two is you put the big billboards out there in between the, like, the rotaries and stuff.
Yeah, we, we put them out, but we increased the amount, councillor.
You increased the amount, and really, to be honest with you, this is a statement, it's up to the candidate. The candidate has to drive people out to vote, and they want, you know what I mean? Because at the end of the day, it really comes down to the candidates that are running for the elections.
One thing that we do do in elections is the whole, the whole idea is, we do try to increase the vote. That's, that's our job. We really want to get everybody out to vote, so that's...
It's a combination of things, and I think you guys do a really good job with what you guys are doing, and then I think it's, it's also the candidate's responsibility to push that vote out. And it's a combination of both, and if you give all the technological upgrades and everything that you guys do with the vote by mail, it's changed post-COVID. It's, you know, the vote by mail has been pretty popular with folks making it more accessible to vote. But I think, and maybe you can answer this question, do you think the vote by mail has increased turnout, or has it stayed the same and made it more accessible for folks that are going to, like, going out of state or going to Florida for the time being?
Not, not having an exact number, meaning, and what I'm saying by that is, it doesn't, it's a tremendous convenience, and we hear that all the time, and people are thrilled that says we have, you know, we have vote by mail, we have early voting, and we hear a tremendous, we, if you just look at elections, it doesn't look like it really increases it that much. That being said, this started during COVID. If we stopped offering that, it could be a drop-off, and I think that would be the concern.
Many years ago, prior to COVID, if you wanted to do an absentee, or you wanted to come in person and vote, you'd have to have an excuse that you were going somewhere.
Correct.
Is it changed now that you have no excuse, you can just come in? If it's an early vote, you can come into the chambers here and vote?
For vote by mail, yes. It's, it's, you can, you don't need any type of excuse at all, no. We still, we still have the absentee as well, though, and...
Yep.
But if you notice, when we do the ballots, now the ballots are pretty much absentee, you know, early vote, you know, it's early, either or.
The one thing we want to do is make it best accessibility that they possibly can for a person to vote, and not make it difficult for them. And I, I know those folks out there also that do pick up folks, bring them to the, to the, like, the, the polls on, on the day of, if they want to go old-fashioned way.[1773.83] But the vote by mail's been great. You guys, you and Nikki Crispo, you guys have done a great job.
Tremendous job.
You got a great team over there in the Elections Department. Want to thank you for everything you do and hopefully...
Well, I appreciate it, Counsel. Well, inform everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yang?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm also a bit defensive for you all because there were comments made about, you know, you guys need to do more and this is like a yes and, right? I think we all can always do more in every aspect of our lives, right, including our work. And one thing that I respect and love about your office, bless you, bless you, is that you all are always receptive to feedback, always saying yes, always saying yes, we'll look into that, yes, you know, we appreciate the recommendation, yes, send people our way, right? Like, there's never been a time that you all have been like, well, we're not going to, like, you've always, always, always said, yeah, let's try this, right?
That's come from, from years of an election from John Gillis, Joe Shade, Nikki Crispo. We're there to help.
Right? Like, it's just, and you're always evolving because of, I mean, even the last decade, right, with all the challenges that were mentioned with COVID and the changes, et cetera. I mean, like, you guys always go above and beyond. You are always tabling at community events, making sure that there's voter registration happening, right? And you go into it bipartisan, you're not, it's just, let's just get residents, you know, registered. I see you guys out and about all of the time in the community doing that. And I will just say, like, the most important thing I think right now is, you know, to increasing voter engagement is ensuring that people feel safe coming to vote, right? Regardless of, again, where they're, they are with party lines, regardless of whether they're immigrants or not or whatever, like, it's, I think, I think that one of the biggest impediments is safety and all those unknowns. And I think your office, and I said this before, goes above and beyond in making sure that people are safe, right? Whether you're an election worker, whether you're a resident, I mean, like, it's, and it's not like this overbearing, you know, you know, enforcements everywhere. It's this, it's this nice, again, like, safe community feeling that you all really work hard at. That doesn't happen by accident. And so I'm a little bit defensive when, you know, there's any sort of implication that you all are doing anything less than because you're doing, if anything, above and beyond what any clerk, I think, or clerk's office really is doing right now. You make it safe and accessible for people to come and vote. Multiple languages are provided. You know, it's just above and beyond. So I'm a little defensive and that's, I just needed to get that out there and let people know that.
Thank you.
It is, the biggest concern is safety and here in Quincy, you are absolutely safe to go and vote and I just want people to know that you guys make that possible, so. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. So we had a motion by Counselor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Licensing Board. Motion to approve by Counsel Divine. All those in favor? Oppose and the ayes have it. And the Census. Motion to approve by Counsel Divine. All those in favor? Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Counsel Kane. On the motion, Counsel Yang.
Again, just another shout out to the work that you all are doing and just, you know, needing to always give gratitude for the fact that you all humored me many years ago with the language access project that really, I think, is with your thoughtfulness and how to actually structure that into a way that is effective use of policy and city funds has yielded, I think, year over year, you know, again, increased access for residents. And so I know that it's still fairly new and that maybe people don't know yet that it exists, but, you know, PSA for any department or anyone engaging with the city, that this department here, this team here, makes it possible that there is language access, ADA compliance for any sort of needs, for any meetings, newsletters, et cetera. And just again, the fact that you all took that on into your department when you didn't need to, but really respected the importance of it and how important it was to me. I'll just forever be grateful and always take an opportunity to send your kudos for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray Yang. Counsel Divine?
Mr. Fatsy, Rob. I want to say thank you very much. While I have you up there, you give, I know a lot of people think they say rubber stamp and things like that. That is not such a thing that happens in your department or the zoning or... I had the luxury of working with you guys recently on Lyon Street. It went really well and both parties, the constituents that had issues and the developer was trying to build it. Your department made it easy that they were all able to work together and at the end of the day, both parties were very happy with what came out. So it's very important what you guys do and your whole team. Actually, I didn't check, but I'm sure that along the education part on your guys is pretty hefty because you have some pretty smart people up there. But every decision you make is very important because it, you have to be forward-thinking, huge. And you do a great job and I wanted to let you know that the constituents that I've been working with have faith in you and sometimes they do ask, oh, is this a done deal? And I'm like, no, it's never a done deal. It's going to get adjusted and talked about at planning and that's what they're there for. And the few projects that I've had to work on, they saw that and they've seen it happen. And so thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, Counselor. I would like to say something to you all. Each and every counselor here works with the Planning Department for obvious reasons and each and every ward, each and every project, each and every person that I'm looking at here reaches out to us and works with us closely. And that's what the people at home should know, is that you don't leave a rock unturned. I'm surprised I'm not getting tortured, but I'm not, not, not fighting that. But I just want to say, each and every one of you reaches out to us, each and every one of you have an opportunity to engage us. And for all those at home, all our planning board meetings are on television and you should watch them so that you understand what diligence is put into it. I have a fantastic staff and, Rob, my deputy is incredibly talented as well and I just want to say to you folks, thank you because you helped me make it a little bit more digestible for people to understand how many steps we take when we go through each and every project. And as long as you have a question, we're there to answer it and that's to the people at home as well. So, thank you very much.
Counselor DeBarna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, I just want to thank you for everything you do over the years, the Planning Department, Rob Nevens. I watch the Planning Board meetings live. Over the years, we've had a lot more projects going on in the city. You guys have been very, very busy, you've been great with, I also want to give a shout out to the CDBG crew, Sean Glennon, Board of a Clubhouse, all the funneling of funding on grants and other things that you guys do. I think behind the scenes, folks don't understand, you got to move the city forward and the revitalization of different projects, especially in the downtown. I know it's very aggressive right now, which is great. As we get over, over the whole winter of being so cold and a lot of rain, but we're moving along and we got to keep, standing is a great term. Standing still is moving backwards. So we got to move the city forward in the right directions and you guys do a great job and just want to thank you for everything.
Well, thank you very much. I know that you guys are aware of the budget and aware of the fact that we also do the CDBG budget as well and I have a CDBG staff that is unsurpassed. And each and every one of you reaches out to us, each and every one of you informs us and helps us plan better. So with your input, we're a better planning department and the city benefits from it. And, you know, the support we've gotten from the mayor's office and the support we get from everybody makes our job actually reasonably pleasurable. There are some jobs that are tougher than others, but that's what we're here for, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Motion by Counsel Kane. On the motion, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose and the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Fatsys?
And thank you, thank you for your comment. Best was last.
Yeah, last is the best. And with that, our motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye and we adjourn at 9:28.